I'm going to go ahead and call this Tuesday, January 6th, meeting of the Placer County Board of Supervisors. The order will begin with a flag salute, and it looks like I am leading that. I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, our next order of business is we are going to move towards the ceremonial administration of the oath of office for incoming supervisors and elected officials. And if we can have our elected officials come down to the front of the podium here, in this podium area, we'll go ahead and have our Judge Pineschi come provide you with it.
All right, so today we're doing the swearing-in ceremony for our elected officials. I'll start with the two supervisors. Supervisor Chairman of the Board at this time, Supervisor Jack Duran. There is also Supervisor Robert Weigant. On your left is Sheriff Ed Bonner. And the cis, I'm going to make sure I have my heart control there, Kristen Spears, who is the assessor. Janine Wintushausen is the tax collector, treasurer, and Scott Holmes, the district attorney of Placer County. So, if you would each raise your right hand, please. I state your name.
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we need to, for a photo up here. You have to do it right there. All right.
All right, here we go. All right, on three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
All right, thank you. Now back to work, I guess.
Thank you, Judge.
All righty, our next order of business is the commemorative coin presentation. And today, we have two coins that we're going to be issuing. Coin number eighty-nine to the family of Detective Michael David Davis, and then also to Deputy Jeff Davis. Let me give you a little bit of background on the commemorative coin. Our coin was instituted in Placer County by the Board of Supervisors in 2002. The program has rewarded community members of the county for acts of heroism, outstanding community service, and exceptional acts that have dramatically improved or impacted people's lives. In the past, the Board of Supervisors have given the opportunity for award that meets one of the following criteria: Offered contribution of longstanding service to Placer County or resident thereof; Sacrificed a combination of time and talent to Placer County or resident thereof; Went beyond the call of duty to save a life; Voluntarily performed the act of heroism that was not paid for the act; Participated in a rarely told or reported feat; Dramatically improved and impacted a life. If I could have the family of Michael David Davis come to the podium, please? Ms. Davis? And Jeff Davis? And Ed Bonner? And anyone else, Ed, that you would like to have down here as well?
You know, if you wouldn't mind, I'd love to have the uniformed officers.
Whatever you want.
I have all the uniforms.
Gentlemen, women?
Get our backs.
Today's award is especially poignant and significant award to our community here in Placer County, as well as myself personally, and I know that the Board of Supervisors feels the same way. On October 24th of last year, Placer County Sheriff's Detective Michael David Davis was killed in the line of duty. Placer County Deputy Jeff Davis, who is here today, was wounded in the same gunfight with the suspect. And, as we all know, the event started in Sacramento County and proceeded and concluded here in Placer County, in Auburn. On behalf of the entire Board and myself personally, I want to offer heartfelt sympathies to Jessica Davis and Detective Davis's widow, who is here today with us, and to Deputy Jeff Davis and your family. We want to express our appreciation for your courage and your sacrifice. Detective Davis was forty-two years old. He would have turned forty-three five days after his untimely death. He first came to the sheriff's office as a reserve deputy in 1996. He was hired as a police officer with the City of Auburn Police Department that same year and became a member of the Placer County Sheriff's Office in 1999. He served in many capacities and has been a homicide detective for the past ten years. Michael was married to Jessica, and between them, they had four children. We acknowledge Deputy Davis for his courage to put himself in harm's way every day. That is the unknown of being in law enforcement. And it's a routine that is often uneventful, but on this particular day was eventful. Especially when you have to face folks that want to do you and the community harm. Deputy Davis, an eight-year veteran of the sheriff's office, was working on his regular patrol shift that day. He, like Detective Davis and many other members of the law enforcement family, responded to a call that a suspect in the murder of a Sacramento Deputy Sheriff, Danny Oliver, could be in the Auburn area. Neither of these men hesitated to confront a criminal with evil intent, to put themselves into danger. Not only these two individuals, but our whole department in Placer County. They were willing to put their lives on the line to protect us because that's what our law enforcement and our heroes do. So on behalf of myself, you know, it's very difficult for me, you know, as the son of a LA County Sheriff, thirty-three years, as the brother of a officer captain in Washoe County, parole agent in Kent, Washington, and myself as a former Deputy Attorney General with the State of California, it pains me to have to give these awards in the most emotional sense, but I'm very proud on behalf of our county to give these to you. Awards number eighty-nine and award number ninety. Does he have a couple of words that he would like to say? And I know that the rest of the Board would have comments as well.
I do, first off, Mr. Chairman, thank you and the Board for recognizing the circumstance, a tragic event. But I think, as importantly, your support well before and during and after the tragedy that we faced. And I think that, when I think about the coins, there's two coins, but those coins are representative of the men and women of the sheriff's office. You know, when we think about this, and we think, I think of it often, but, you know, that afternoon, and that evening, and the next morning, and the next day, sheriff's employees went to work. They kept serving and doing their job. And in light of the tragedy and a great appreciation of your Board's recognition of it, but I also think that this commendation, if you will, goes to the hundreds of men and women who, representative behind me, but day in and day out, take that risk, do the sacrifice, and serve this community. And then finally, just my heartfelt thanks to this community that we serve. It is an honor, and the affection and support that we all got from them is overwhelming. On behalf of the entire Sheriff's Department and every person, professional staff and those that wear the uniform, Mr. Chairman, all Board members, thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Great. And I think if we can have you turn around, our photographers, we're going to take a picture. Would you?
Yeah, would you? Come down. Right in the middle.
Thank you.
Okay, take a deep breath and we'll continue on with the meeting. We're now going to move towards our reorganization of the Board, our selection of the 2015 Chairman, and our selection of the 2015 Vice Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Kirk Euler for our next Chair, 2015.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Ready?
Thank you very much. And Jack, before we move on with the selection of the Vice Chair on behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I want to thank you, if you wouldn't mind, come back over here. I want to thank you for your leadership of our Board in this last year. We've had a number of controversial items come before us. There were times when it members of the public or members of this Board, emotions might have flared from time to time, but still, under your guidance, with all reasonable jurisprudence brought to bear, you kept us on track and moving forward as a Board. And I think it's remarkable how well, despite the diversity of our backgrounds on this Board, our political affiliations, all of that, we work together very well. And it's through good, strong leadership like you showed us last year that we're able to accomplish that, and I want to thank you very much for that.
Thank you very much. Good day, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we move on with the selection of the Vice Chair. Except nominations for Vice Chair for 2015?
Mr. Chair, it's my honor to nominate a person that has quite a bit of experience chairing meetings and serving here. He's actually the dean of the Board, believe it or not. He doesn't look any older than he did when he started. It's my pleasure to nominate Robert Weigant for Vice Chair.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion and a second for what was the longest nomination speech of a Vice Chair I've ever heard. So all in favor of Supervisor Weigant serving as Vice Chair for 2015, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none? Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and move on with the statement of meeting procedures. Ann, if you would, please.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, January 6th, 2015. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. The Board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the Board. Keep in mind that the Chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all cell phones be turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Ann. Just want to point out, for the Board's purposes, as well as purposes of the public, been a slight modification in the order of our agenda. Previously, we would have public comment. Prior to adopting the consent agenda, we've moved consent prior to public comment now. So our next item will be consent. However, this does not preclude anybody who has any concerns about the consent calendar. Any member of the public may request that an item on the consent calendar be removed for discussion. So I will start first with the Board. Any Board members have any item on consent they'd like removed for discussion?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any member of the public have an item on the consent calendar they'd like removed? If so, please come forward. At this time, just going to ask you to state the item that you'd like removed and not get into the arguments. That time will be afforded you.
Okay. Item twenty.
Item twenty.
Reduction of hours at the library?
Item twenty, all right. Item twenty is polled from consent for consideration by the Board. Thank you very much. Anybody else have any other items? All right, seeing none, do you have a motion to adopt the remainder of the consent items? All right, we have a motion by Duran and a second by Holmes to adopt consent. Roll call, please.
Duran?
Yes.
Weigant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Montgomery?
Euler?
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and take public comment, then we'll take that item that was just removed as our first action item. So at this time, any member of the Board may address, excuse me, any member of the public, a member of the Board can too, chime in if you want. Any member of the public may address the Board on any item that is not on the agenda, knowing that the Board cannot take action on items not on the agenda. So please go ahead.
I have some packets for each one of you.
Okay, if you would, please hand those to the Cork of the Board. That would be great.
I'm still a little emotionally after the presentation. I, my father and grandfather were Chicago policemen. My father died while on duty, and my grandfather was killed in the line of duty, so I hope you'll understand. My name is Denise Stone, and I live at 4520 North Glenn Street in Granite Bay. And I've lived in Placer County since 1975. I've lived in Rockland, Loomis, Penrin, and currently in Granite Bay. I have been a member of the Sierra College faculty since 1978. I pay my taxes and vote in every election. And I'm here today because every time heavy rains, the rain is very heavy, my anxiety level raises because my house may flood. So I've prepared those packets for you. As you can see, I've been dealing with this flooding for over twenty years. The flooding happens, I feel, first because the county has failed to replace the old undersized drainage culvert on North Glenn Street, and number two, that the county refuses to enforce the grading ordinance. This has occurred since 1995, when the owner of the property at 8061 Wyndham Hill erected a fence locking the flow of water from the miners' ravine tributary at North Glenn Street. The current owner, Mr. Norman Gibler, has now added a fence covering and packed leaves on both sides of the fence to ensure that no water reaches his home. And I've included many pictures in that packet for you. If you've seen the destruction currently happening in Washington State, not so bad as that at my home, but as you can understand, I'm, my fear and frustration. Every time flooding occurs, I'm out sandbagging my home and cleaning the culvert out with my rake, both day and night, trying to save my home from flooding. It's a dangerous situation. I'm seventy-three years old. I've fallen several times attempting to clear the culvert.
Yeah, no, that's what, that's what I'm saying.
And I'm doing, are there any questions?
Okay. What I'd like to do at this time, since you're in Granite Bay, you're my district.
Yes, I am, sir.
Okay. Linda Brown is my assistant, and what I would like you to do, since I don't see her in there right now, is I'd like you to walk, if you could, when you leave, go out that door, hang a right, go in the first door right there, and you'll see Linda's business card and my business card. Grab each, oh, there's Linda walking in right there. So you'll walk out with Linda, and we'll get this taken care of, all right?
In fact, I did, I had contacted Linda on December 15th, and I hadn't heard from her up until today, so.
Unfortunately, Linda's been dealing with a, you wouldn't have recognized her voice at all. She's been dealing with really bad sickness for the last three weeks, so.
I'd just like to make one final statement, if that's.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay. I really feel I'm a reasonable and patient person, but twenty years is not reasonable. And so, I want to work with the Board, but I'm willing to wait sixty days for you to resolve this issue and write in to me. Afterwards, I feel I have to go to the media. I can't continue to face this flooding issue and the anxiety and the damage. I have had thousands of dollars worth of damage to my home. I just can't continue to do it. So I appreciate very much you letting me present before you. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you so much.
Good morning. Victoria Connolly, Openeria Homeless Forum. Just a point of order. We have several of us here to discuss our homeless proposal. Would you prefer that we discuss it now or under the agenda item?
Yeah, we do have an agendized, an agendized item, receiving a report on the homeless needs assessment that's underway, and so that's where those comments would be appropriate.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you clarifying that. Anybody else under public comment? Morning.
Morning. Gary Mappa, 350 Cuckoo Court, Applegate. And I didn't name the road, that's just where I happened to move to, but it's very coincidental. The item I'm concerned about is the recent publication in the Auburn Journal about Costco and the city's intent to possibly sue the county. And I think it's, perception-wise, it's imminent that that's going to happen. I mean, I just can't see it not happening. And in the interim, whether I'm for Costco or not, doesn't matter, but in the interim, I'm concerned about any further demolition of buildings at the D. Witt Center, whether it's a random building or anything associated with Costco. To tear down any buildings until we get further down the path, in my mind, would be criminal. There's value in those buildings, and to just go in because you think Costco's going to be here and start spending money and tear them down, totally wrong. So I'm going to go on record that I am totally against doing anything with further demolition of buildings until this is further down the road. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rappa. Anybody else under public comment?
My name is Jim Sadek, and I'm a resident of Tahoe City. With Placer County being a cooperative agency on the State Route 89 realignment project, I, as a member of your jurisdiction, am requesting that Placer County, that each Placer County Board member become fully engaged in the proposed project scope based on the seven alternates. This project right now is in the EIR review phase with comments due by February 17th. I am asking that each Board member be able to justify that acquiring the financial responsibility for the maintenance of Fanny Bridge and adjacent roadway is a financial benefit to the taxpayers of Placer County. After two years of heavy involvement in this project, I see no positive return on the investment to any of the taxpayers in Placer County if alternates one through four are selected. I'm also requesting, from an economical standpoint, that you, as Board members, submit your comments as to what alternate best supports the already struggling economy of Tahoe City. I would like to see members of the Board at the January 23rd meeting to be held at 9:30 at Grand Labakan in Tahoe City. This is a huge project for Tahoe City and Placer County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the Board under public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and, just briefly, any supervisor committee reports?
Seeing none.
I have a committee report, Mr. Chairman. I would like to welcome DeeDee Cordell, our new information officer. Is DeeDee in the, in the room? I guess not. Well, anyway, DeeDee, welcome to the county. Actually, yes. Welcome to the county of Placer, and we wish you well, so.
Thank you.
So let's go ahead and take up item twenty that was polled from consent. The gentleman who requested that that item be polled, please come forward and state your case, sir, if you would, please. Try to adhere to the three-minute limit that we have for speakers on these items. That would be appreciated.
Thank you. My name is Michael Otten, and I'm a longtime member of the Placer County Library Advisory Board, representing the City of Auburn. And I think I'm advocating that we keep at least the Auburn Library open on Mondays. It's my experience that that's the busiest day of the week at the Auburn Library, and to close that, and particularly during the winter, an extra day works a hardship on a lot of the people that. the people that come and use the library, a lot of people on fixed incomes, homeless, just to find a warm place and a chance to read these expensive newspapers a lot of people can't afford and don't have access to the modern devices that everybody has in their pockets these days or on their wrist. And, and I think it's important, on such short notice, that with the library facing the renovation of the, replacement of the carpeting, which is a disgrace, and you wouldn't want to invite anybody into your own home if you had carpeting that looks like the carpeting at the library. And, and I, I think, on behalf of the Auburn area residents and the fact that this is our main library, that it be kept open, and in the long term, and this is no reflection on Mary, and I agree with most of the things that she says in there, she's a wonder woman, and when it comes to the library, particularly during this difficult time for funding libraries, and, and so that would be my request. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Mary, if you would, please.
Good morning. Mary George, Director of Library Services. I brought with me Kelly Heikala, Senior ASO. My staff analyzed the open hours for both Rockland and Auburn. While Monday is a very busy day, the Board approved last December the library's strategic plan, and in the strategic plan, it says that we need to add more robust hours for young families and working families. And so, closing the library on Saturdays, we did not consider that because that is one of the days that many folks can make it to the library. The slowest days are actually Thursdays and Fridays for circulation, and we didn't do that because we didn't want to split our staff's days off. That would give them Thursdays or Sundays off, and we wanted them to have, you know, good morale and have consistent days off. So, we did analyze the circulation statistics and felt that Mondays were the best bang for the buck. We do use a lot of extra help staff on Mondays, and we think that we can really make an effective change in creating a healthy staffing model by analyzing with these targeted cuts.
Okay. Questions by Board Members? Supervisor Holmes?
Mary, thank you. I appreciate you briefing me on this item, and I know the challenges that the library supports, and as you know, I'm a big supporter of the library because I'm there all the time. I guess I won't be there on Monday, so.
You'll have to come on Saturday.
Anyhow, I know, this is kind of a temporary situation until we find a real solution for library services, so we can have a more.
Yes.
Robust and efficient library system.
I absolutely see it as a temporary solution. I've been telling everybody, and I've been using this motion.
Yeah.
That we have to cocoon.
Yeah.
In order to grow into the butterfly that we really need to become for our savvy library customers. Right now, we really have to constrict so we can analyze and we can find out how much it actually costs, so we can back into the funding that we have right now. And I think that the best way to do that is with these targeted cuts and with strategic maneuvers, so that we can actually see the forest through the trees. Our system is at risk of collapsing unless we take a look at every single model of efficiency.
So this is a, it's not a temporary solution. This is an opportunity to do some more analytical and keeping the libraries open and doing the best services.
Absolutely. This is a way for us to take a look at, I think I called it an unwieldy staffing model in my report.
Yeah.
And it really is, it's just becoming too unmanageable for us. And we have two choices. We can take a look at everything, and we can try to restructure, or we can just ignore it and keep going the way we've been going, and our system, you know, will collapse. Our circulation is down 10% right now, and unless we do some very, you know, concerted efforts to save our system, we're going to continue in that vein.
Thank you.
Any member of the public wish to address the board on this item? All right. I want to entertain a motion. It's Board's pleasure. Okay, motion Holmes, second Duran to approve item 20. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our timed 9:15 item. This is a presentation or a recognition of Placer County by our friends at the California State Association of Counties. Mr. Brown presenting, and I know that Matt Kate, the Executive Director of CSAC, is here as well.
Great, good morning. Thank you, Chair Euler, members of the Board. Happy New Year. Jeff Brown, your Health and Human Services Director. It's my distinct pleasure to introduce to you Mr. Matt Kate, Executive Director for the California State Association of Counties. Prior to his current position, when he was appointed in 2012, he served distinguishedly for four years under two governors as the Secretary of the Department of Corrections and Rehabilitation. Mr. Kate's here with us this morning to share with us CSAC's recognition of three of our top performing Health and Human Service programs. I'll turn it over to Mr. Kate.
Thank you, Mr. Director. Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, congratulations. Congratulations Supervisor Duran on a great year. I'm Matt Kate, thank you for that introduction. Been at CSAC for two years. If I could, before discussing these awards, if I could just give a quick report on CSAC. CSAC was formed in 1895 by California supervisors. And we really, really have three main functions. One is advocacy, so we'll be watching the governor's budget on Friday and asking the CAO's Association and others to help us analyze that and then advocate on behalf of California's counties concerning the intricate relationship between the state and local government. Just one example, the state, two years ago owed local governments about a billion dollars in pre-2004 mandates. And so, we've been asking the governor and the legislature to address that, and we've heard yesterday that the governor's going to push for a $533 million repayment this year. So, some progress on that front for all of California's counties. But, we also provide communications. We now are the California State Association of Counties. Instead of just representing supervisors, we try to represent all counties. So, the county councils, for examples, are working with us now to do two amicus briefs to the Supreme Court on behalf of California's counties, and Mr. Carden and his colleagues do a great job in that respect. Today, I'm here primarily to not only provide this update, but also to present some awards. One of the things we try to do at CSAC is represent all California's counties by highlighting the best and brightest performing programs throughout the state. Our Challenge and Merit Award program has been going for about 20 years at CSAC. This year, we had 200 entries, and only 18 counties were selected to receive these awards, and very few received more than one award. We're here today because Placer County has received three merit awards for CSAC, so it's a terrific accomplishment. And if I could have the assistance of Director Brown and Deputy Director Canous. The first merit award goes to the county's Human Services Center. As the Board may know, they established a call center, a task-based workload management system, a lobby management and client services function, and basically took these and combined them and created this terrific services center. I was impressed when I saw that now 91% of all calls to your services center are addressed in just one call. And so, as a former resident of Placer County, I can tell you, you're known for combining government and business practices together, and this is a great example of trying to do things the way business does things and making even the provision of services to those who are most in need as efficient as possible. So if I could, I would call up Cheryl Davis, Division Director for Human Services. Offer our congratulations from CSAC.
Thank you.
Well done. Stay here. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Susan. Oh, got it. All right. The second merit award is being presented to the county's co-occurring program. In this program, the county has taken its, the issue of mental health and substance use disorder and decided to address those together. As most of you probably know, that's best practices, but Placer County has put together what we believe is really the first fully integrated program. And so, the things that impressed the members of the committee that made this selection and impressed me were the fact that you've not only co-located but co-trained. And so, based on my law enforcement background, I can tell you that the people that are in our jails and the people that are in our prisons, so many are people that have a background in mental illness and also struggle with substance use disorder. And that combination, they are themselves victimized, and they can victimize others in dealing with those issues. And so, we thought that it was a terrific plan. We know that there's a, also a great benefit to not only the people that are being treated, but also to the county. Your, your reports from your department heads show that the visits to the psychiatric health facilities are down 43%. The number of days spent, down 45%, and ER visits, down 60%, saving $244,000 since the program began. So again, congratulations to your county executive, congratulations to your department heads, and hopefully I have this right. And congratulations to Program Manager Amy Ellis. The final merit award that we're presenting to the Board and to the county is the county's Older Adult Services Coordination Program. We were impressed that this program, again, the theme here is the combination of critical services to meet the right group of people. We've, I was reading last year in the Attorney General's Report that elder abuse is on the rise, and perhaps it's the economy, but we know that elder abuse, especially those with disabilities, those who are homeless, is all on the rise. And so, by getting an older, elder adult services coordinator and a multidisciplinary team, combined with peer advocates, we were impressed that the county has now found a way to address the needs of those older adults who need it the most here in Placer County, and in classic Placer County style, saving $100,000 at the same time by, through coordination and really just smart government. So, with that, I would present this award to the Board of Supervisors and to Cheryl Trinwith, the Client Services Program Manager.
Cheryl's ill today, so I'll be happy to.
Okay.
All right. If I could, I would just also, just want to thank this Board for a couple other things. Number one, your representative to CSAC, Supervisor Holmes, does a wonderful job representing Placer County at CSAC and making sure that the concerns of Placer County are brought forward to Sacramento and that we are aware of how the laws there are impacting you. So thank you for Supervisor Holmes. Supervisor Holmes, thank you for your service on our Board. I also want to thank you for the use of Graham Canous's time. He has dedicated quite a bit of time to helping us analyze the Health and Human Services laws in particular and the impacts, especially on county budgets. And so, we know that these people are very busy, and the fact that you've allowed them to sacrifice some time on behalf of CSAC is greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I know Supervisor Holmes has.
Well, first of all, I want to thank county staff for the great job you've done. You make us proud, and it's proud of me. I'm proud to go to CSAC, and I go there for therapy because we're in such good stead that I hear a lot of stories from the other counties, and because of the work you guys do, really makes me feel proud. And, Mr. Kate, I just want to thank you for personally taking the time to present these awards. That means a lot to us, so thank you very much.
Thank you. And any other supervisors? I'll just add, Matt was great introducing this by saying that, you know, few counties are recognized even once, fewer, but three times, three different recognitions. And it's so nice because as I'm at my MAC meetings or any other things that I'm, when I'm in Rayleigh's, and people are asking me questions about, well, how are we managing this, and what are you doing there? I try to convey the intuitive nature that county employees in Placer have toward efficiency, toward working together across departments. We don't believe in silos, we believe in solving problems. But when I say it, it sounds like bragging. When somebody like Matt gets up here and says it, it's validating. And so, I want to recognize once again the work that our workforce does, and you do it in an era of constrained budgets, when you see people retiring and positions not being filled, and you're asked to take on additional responsibilities, and you do. And you continue to provide a high level of service to the people of Placer County with great pride, and so thank you for that. And Matt, thank you for your recognition of their efforts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Thank you again.
Could we just have some of the team members that are here be recognized?
Of course, absolutely.
The ladies in particular.
Yeah.
All the team members that are part of.
I thought, I thought we had them here. No?
First, we're sitting down.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now back to providing that great service.
Thank you for human services.
Yes. Oh, yeah, absolutely. I'm sorry, I thought we had everybody that was. Go ahead.
No, quite a few more.
Okay.
Everybody in human services?
Very nice, thank you.
So, thank you to CSAC, and thank you to the Board and to CEO for recognizing all of their hard work.
Great, thanks so much. Okay, we're going to go on with our agenda item. Our 9:30 timed item is another Health and Human Services. Again, Mr. Brown presenting?
I need to get a PowerPoint presentation.
He's loading it up right now.
Ah, perfect. Well, good morning again. Jeff Brown again, your Health and Human Services Director. It's my pleasure to be here, not just representing our Health and Human Services Department, but also personnel with Lori Walsh, and also CEO Organizational Development with Lori Woods. We're all members of a relatively newly-formed County Health and Wellness Committee. And as a group, we've been meeting over the last eight months to begin the development of an employee wellness program within our county. You most likely remember from a few months ago when Dr. Oldham, our Health Officer, spoke to you, celebrating the fact that Placer County was named the number-two county in California for health and wellness. And while that's an impressive ranking, we still believe we can, we can make improvements, and we think the perfect place to start is with an employee wellness program. An employee wellness program is an investment in our employees, really helps them to better develop healthy behaviors, which really leads to improvements in both their personal life and their private, their personal and professional lives. Just a bit of background, employee wellness programs, evidence-based practice, they've shown positive outcomes across the United States, both in the private sector and in the public sector, and have many documented benefits. Number one, of course, is the health of our employees, but you can see there's also benefits to the employer. So decreases in healthcare costs, decreases in absenteeism, increases in productivity. So, as can be seen from this slide, the benefits of wellness programs really build on each other, and you can really start in the area of increased employee engagement, which can lead to the ability to recruit and retain employees, and ultimately, a positive organizational image, which again, leads into the cycle which makes it easier to recruit and retain employees. Employee wellness programs are just not a luxury of the Googles of the world. They've been recognized as really having benefits for employers, and we can see some really robust and award-winning programs in our region. Kaiser has a program, Hewlett-Packard, Verizon, Sleep Train, and even our local County Office of Education has been recognized for their wellness programs. So, the last few months, we've decided to focus on four areas. Number one, we actually pulled a website together to provide wellness resources to our workforce. We've started educational workshops. We've tried to increase opportunities for people to get physical activity. And then, I'm going to speak just for a couple of minutes about our fitness challenge, which is the Walk Across America Challenge. This was something that we started. We challenged all employees that were interested to walk up to. We challenged all employees that were interested to walk up to 10,000 steps a day and to do that for eight weeks. And while this wasn't promoted extensively, we had an overwhelming response from our employees. As you can see, we had almost all departments participate. We had just slightly shy of 770 employees participate, and that represents just roughly around 30 percent of our total workforce. And so, what I'd like to share with you are just the three top teams that we had that really embraced the challenge and had some impressive results. And you probably recognize some of these happy individuals that are members of our workforce. This is Team Number One, Walkie-Talkie, first place. They really wore out those shoes. You know, just as a point of reference, this team actually walked an average of 54 miles per person per week.
Wow.
And then, in second place, this is one of our largest teams and probably the team with one of the best names, the Oddballs, from the Auditor's Office. They averaged slightly less than that, 52 miles per week per employee.
Wow.
And then, covering our right flank was our Public Protection, the Sheriff's Bailiff's Brigade. You can see they have those wonderful high-tech walking shoes, and they averaged roughly about 51 miles per week. So, all of these teams were a great inspiration, not just for the people engaged in the challenge, but for all employees in the county. And so, I'd just like to end with a couple of thank yous. First, a thank you to Lori Walsh and a thank you to Lori Woods. They've really provided a lot of leadership and support to make this happen county-wide. And then, I'd actually like Joe Arseneth and Megan Thompson to stand, if they're here. I believe they are. I mean, Joe is a program manager in public health. He's done an incredible job leading the initiation of these wellness activities and really made this a reality. Megan has been the coordinator. She's an intern working with us, and she has really made this come to life. She's worked on this every day. These are the individuals that did all the heavy lifting. They did the planning, they did the organizing, they did the monitoring, they motivated everyone, and really made this work as a very successful campaign, as our first campaign out of the gate. So, I'd like to thank both of you for your hard work and great success. And then, finally, I'd like to invite up to the podium the three top team captains to receive certificates of recognition. I believe Chair Euler's going to help me with this. Diana Bosworth from SEDRA, Jane Fogarty from the Auditor's Office, and Deputy Sheriff, or Deputy Sheriff Shirley Cox from the Sheriff's Department.
So, I think you said 53 miles a week?
Fifty-four miles a week.
Fifty-four miles a week. For eight weeks, places you roughly in San Diego. You're responsible for your own airfare getting back. But we'll start with the third-place winners. Want to thank you for your commitment in coordinating your team. I know it can be tough to keep everybody on track, but you did it. And the Auditor's Office is the second-place team. Love the name. You should get first place with the name. And thank you very much, the Walkie-Talkies. Sorry. Got to get used to these responses. Slide on over. I got to center you up. There you go. We've got time to slide in a couple of department head items. Why don't we go ahead? Andy, there you go. Look at that. You knew I was going to call the...
I read your mind, Chairman Euler.
I think we're going to skip you and go to Community Development. Just make sure you're not to us.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'm here today representing the Auditor's Office. As you know, one of our longtime employees, Jane Golding, retired just last week. She has 40 years of institutional knowledge, especially in the area of property taxation. I could go on and on. I think you know all about Jane. Primarily, we want to bring her back to do some extra help work for us. We need some post-AB8 E-RAF spreadsheets done. We need to analyze parcel taxes. You may not know this, but AB 2109 was passed last year by the governor, which is going to require more reporting of parcel taxes to the state controllers, so we need to kind of look at that process. And of course, RDA dissolution is kind of heading into that stage now of long-range property management plans. We now think we might be able to start closing some project areas, and we need to kind of figure out how we're going to be doing that, and Jane will offer her expertise in that area. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on this item.
Board members, any questions? Supervisor Graham?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Andy, this is a, could you kind of explain to the public how this works? Is this kind of like a retired and new tenant kind of relationship?
Yes, this would be a retired and new tenant relationship. CalPERS has rules that you're not allowed to come back for six months after you retire, unless you have a special exception and an individual possesses certain expertise in an area, which we believe Jane qualifies for this. And we need her back before that 180-day period ends. We're going to be going through another round of RDA dissolution work in April, and we'd love for her to be here to double-check my work, which is kind of weird to say.
Do you confirm they have to be back before the 180-day期?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions by board members? Seeing none, questions by members of the public? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Second?
Motion by Duran, second by Holmes. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, oppose, none? Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and take the Facility Services item. Rob, are you prepared to discuss the Facility Services item at this point?
Good morning, Chairman Euler, members of the board. I'm Rob Unhoz, Program Manager for the Capital Improvements Division Facility Services. Marshall Hopper, Chief Probation Officer, and Becky Riggin, Principal Management Analyst, are also here to support this item. We're requesting that your board approve plans and specifications and authorize staff to solicit bids for construction of tenant improvements for the probation department's Placer reentry program, otherwise known as PREP, in Building B at the Bill Santucci Justice Center. Also, approve a resolution authorizing the Director of Facility Services to, or designate to, award and execute the resulting construction contract in an amount not to exceed $528,000 in budgeted net county cost. Also, approve a budget revision to shift $217,378 from project number 4864 to project number 4915 in the Capital Projects Fund. In December 2013, the purchasing manager signed a professional services agreement with Madsen, Flathman, Dameron, and Babcock to perform professional architectural and engineering services for the tenant improvement of the PREP Center. The PREP Center will provide a single point of intake, assessment, and linkage to reentry services for offenders in Placer County. The project consists of tenant improvements and a 2,606 square foot space adjacent to the existing probation department in Building B at the Santucci Justice Center. This facility will have a dedicated exterior entrance, separate from the main lobby, includes restroom facilities, interview rooms, classrooms, and staff workstations. The PREP Center was identified by the Criminal Justice Master Plan as a critical component of a structural approach to offender transition back into the community. In anticipation of an early 2015 opening date, staff has evaluated several delivery methods and numerous cost models to best meet the program cost and schedule requirements. Based on further analysis and extensive cost modeling, it was determined that the construction budget was insufficient to support the scope of work and requires additional funding. The procurement award and award process will be expedited in an effort to meet the program's operational requirements. In order to proceed with the PREP Center tenant improvement at Building B, it's requested that your board authorize staff to solicit bids and authorize the Director of Facility Services to award the bid and execute the resulting contract. Additionally, staff recommends approval of the budget revision to move $217,378 from the project number 4864 to project 4915. The total project cost is $682,201 in budgeted net county cost. This includes $528,000 for construction and contingency and $154,201 for design, project management, fees, and force account. With approval of the budget revision, there will be sufficient funds appropriated in the Capital Projects Fund, project number 4915, to fund these improvements. With that, I recommend that your board approve the action requested and would be happy to answer any questions.
Board members, questions? Supervisor Holmes?
Thank you, Rob. This is very exciting that we're doing this, moving forward with this. And Marshall, would you, could you come down and give us a little broader, not necessarily for me, but for the audience here, about exactly what we're doing here and how this will benefit you?
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, members of the board. Marshall Hopper, your Chief Probation Officer. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a brief update on our reentry program. You know, we worked with our Criminal Justice Master Plan consultant, and we identified areas that we needed to bridge the gap between custody and reintegration back into the community. And some of those ideas included job, substance abuse, programming, different programming things that we would provide assistance to these offenders to get them back into our community and hopefully, on their way to, a path to success. The PREP program or reentry center really bridges that gap. We have a couple of things that are changing recently. We have legislative changes, presumption of split sentences, which means individuals will be getting out of custody that are sentenced to 109 and placed on supervision. We also have in-custody programming that we need to develop. So, this PREP program is going to be a combination of in-custody programming, so we can get the ball rolling with these offenders as they're in custody and as they make that transition back into our community, we'll have a place for them to go and services that continue the process as they reintegrate back into the community. And that's truly the successful model that we're here proposing today also. We've worked with procurement over the last several months, and we have a contract award that we'll be bringing before this board for approval. I believe it's on February 24th, and so, we're looking forward to that as well. Other components involved in the PREP Center include job placement, looking at substance abuse programming, various other types of programming. We're also very excited about an opportunity to work with the Construction Program, California Construction Program, to train offenders as they're released back into the community with skills and services that they would otherwise not have had. We're looking for that opportunity as well. So, this is really a full-service model, so when offenders are released back into our community, because whether you're for 109 or not for 109, there's still one fact, is all of these offenders will get out. And when they do, we don't want them in Placer County walking around with nothing to do and getting into more trouble, so we're going to bridge that gap and develop this program.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Marshall, this is also important as a result of Prop 46 and the reduction in sentences from felonies to misdemeanors. You will also be servicing those folks as well, right?
Yes, the individuals that fall under Prop 47, which are now, which would have been, traditionally would have been felonies, but now are misdemeanor cases. Our department looks at that with a simple approach. We supervise offenders based on risk to the community, not based on felony or misdemeanor, because you can very well have misdemeanor cases that are high-risk and pose a significant threat to our community. So, whether you're placed on probation for a misdemeanor or a felony, we will supervise them. They will have the services in the PREP Center. We will do the things that we do to keep them on the straight and narrow. But the bottom line is, from our perspective, if it's a Prop 47 case and they're on probation, we'll supervise them accordingly.
Any other questions by board members? Any member of the public wish to address the board on this item? Seeing none, we're being asked to authorize staff to solicit bids and approve a construction contract for the Placer reentry program center in Building B along with an associated budget revision. Do we have a motion?
Approval, second.
Motion, Holmes, second. Duran, roll call, please.
Holmes?
Aye.
Duran?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, we will go on to our 10 o'clock timed item. This is a SEDRA item regarding the Placer Vineyards, specific plan amendments. Morning, Mr. Johnson et al.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, Michael Johnson with the Community Development Resource Agency. This morning, staff brings forward a proposal from the Placer Vineyard Owners Group for amendments to the specific plan and development agreement for the Placer Vineyards project. The presentation this morning will be made by Michelle Kingsbury.
Good morning. I'm Michelle Kingsbury, Senior Planner with SEDRA. As Michael mentioned before you today, it's a culmination of actions as we're looking for specific plan amendments for the Placer Vineyards specific plan. We have a brief PowerPoint presentation. There's a significant amount of detail included within the staff report, so for time-wise, I'll go quickly through this. As you're quite aware, Placer Vineyards was originally approved back in 2007. It encompasses 5,230 acres. It's a residential capacity of 14,132 units with proposed over $3.5 million square feet of commercial retail largely along the baseline road area. It also proposes standalone high school, elementary, middle school facilities. Originally approved, it had about 709 acres of open space. There was a gross acreage of 210 acres of parks where we credited, I think about $199, going off memory. There's one private park that got half-credit acreage. We also had a robust program of trails and multipurpose trails and Class 1 bike trails throughout the plan area. Since the original approval back in 2007, a lot's happened. As you're well aware, the economy didn't do so well. It went in the tank and residential markets across the region largely stopped. In addition, the project was in litigation. Back in 2012, the project came out and settled litigation, the economy started to improve, and we started to see a lot more action with this project. Specifically, some of the key actions that have already occurred that amended the previous development agreement were in 2012. We changed what was originally approved where the developers were going to construct all the Corbaccown infrastructure, which is largely along the baseline road area initially during the project. With the February 2012 approval, we went ahead and approved them to do it more in a phased fashion, which is typical of subdivision, where they would put the improvements in as each project component phases in, rather than put them all up, put all the improvements up front. In September 2012, we did some administrative amendments to the development agreement. One of them was clarifying the land, it's an internal land equalization program for the Placer Vineyards developers. That was more specifically defined within the development agreement, as well as looking for what constitutes a supermajority of approvals for the developers for certain amendments to the plan. Other actions that have occurred, back in September 2013, the board approved the projects, what we call the Implementation Policy and Procedures Manual, which is commonly known in our office as the Red Book, but it's a guidebook for staff to process the applications that come through. In addition, back in December 2013, the board had policy direction for staff, which is part of the impetus for us coming here today, to look at changing the way we look at the public facility side, the types of park acreage that we were looking for in this project, as well as responsibilities for who's going to construct and not construct a lot of the public improvements, and we'll go through that a little bit more in detail. The December 23rd action, as I mentioned, was really a jumpstart to why we're here today. The board approved, or I think the adjective was, they were amenable to several changes and assumptions, including looking at the project in an urban area versus, as it originally improved, more of a standalone future incorporation area. We also looked at changing the way the public facilities are financed to a more fee-based program versus a full developer-construct-everything program. We supported the reduction and considering reducing the park acreage from what was originally improved back down to the county's general plan policy standards, which you'll see those incorporated within this package of amendments. We also provided support for the formation of a park district, and you'll see within the development agreement, those are further actions that, you know, if approved today, we'd be coming back forward with... if approved today, we'd be coming back forward with more information of how that district would be formed, what it would constitute, et cetera. We also looked at managing some internal fee programs through a third-party administrator and also supporting the concept of joint use park facilities and extended-term financing. That was really the, kind of the kickstart of why we're here today. I'm going to jump quickly forward on this. In terms of the goals that the applicant for the amendments that are before you today, it's really a financial goal surrounding the three key areas. Improve the project's financial feasibility from a construction point of view, making sure it's implementable. Also looking at long-term maintenance costs from a resident point of view, making sure that it's not overburdened on the residents that will ultimately be residing out there and that they can support these types of facilities and the maintenance costs associated with them. And lastly, being competitive within the region with our adjacent developments that are out there. We've got Sierra Vista specific plan in Roseville that's directly across Baseline Road. That's their main competitor. We've got Riola Vineyards, which I'll be coming back to the board shortly as well with an amendment that's adjacent to this development as well. So just getting it more in line with the competitive nature. Those were the key goals that we brought forward. The 2014 proposed, or I should say 2015 now, specific plan, it's got some revisions. You'll notice that. I'm going to jump through this. Park acreage, in terms of how they proposed reducing the park acreage down to the county's minimum general plan standard, was reducing the, what we call mini-parks or pocket parks, those small types of parks that are located within a lot of the residential neighborhoods. So you'll see in areas such as this where previously there was a little park, it's now being proposed to be eliminated. You'll see some slight reductions in open space areas from 709 acres down to about roughly approximately 693 acres. You'll also see up in the town center, there previously was over here a recreation center, a rec parcel. They're now proposing to change that to a high-density residential parcel. One of the key things to keep in mind as we go forward through this is what hasn't changed. And one of the key items is that we're not proposing any increases in residential capacity to the same number of units. No increases in commercial or retail square footage. It's still approximately three and a half million square feet that's proposed. No changes to any of the buffers or berm's that were proposed and no changes to the locust road circulation study requirement. More specifically, from the parks' perspective, as previously mentioned, we're looking at reducing the park acreage down to the county's minimum general plan standard for active. That would be about 559 acres. It's comprised of three components, roughly 139 credible acres on site. We'll do a credit of two acres for a corporation yard or maintenance facility located in the corporation yard. In addition, there's proposed for 18-acre credit in the form of an in-lu payment or a fee, which comprises the 159 acres. As previously mentioned, the way that that's been achieved is consolidation and elimination of the mini-parks. We're also looking at proposing to consolidate those independent standalone facilities that were originally approved, such as a youth center, senior center, into one center located in the West Community Park. And looking at partnering with the school district, center unified school district, which is a letter in your package, but supported joint use facilities and partnering with each other in the future with those types of facilities. As also mentioned, the underlying land uses, so for instance, where a mini-park has been eliminated, the underlying land use reverts back to what's around it. So for instance, if there was a mini-park located around low-density residential, if the mini-park is eliminated, it just becomes low-density residential. And keep in mind too, no increases in residential unit capacity. So ultimately, the density becomes a little bit lower in those areas. Also mentioned is supporting the creation of the Park and Recreation District and all that is memorialized within your development agreement. We've provided in the staff report, trying to give a quick reference for specific areas where a lot of those key points are located within the development agreement. This map just illustrates in red the areas where elimination of park reduction is being proposed and how they will achieve the county's general plan standards. From a trail and path and public works perspective, they're proposing to eliminate some linear landscape facilities, keeping in mind with their goal of trying to make this project more financially feasible from both the construction and a long-term maintenance perspective. They're also proposing to reduce some of the Class I bike trails from approximately 43 miles down to about 35 miles. They're looking at narrowing some landscape medians along Baseline Road and Watt Avenue to be consistent with what's adjacent. They see our specific plan from 20 feet to 14 feet. That'll reduce landscaping in those medians and ultimately, long-term costs in those areas. They're also proposing to eliminate a pedestrian overcrossing bridge that was originally approved for Baseline Road. Sierra Vista specific plan was not approved with that, and so we're trying to be consistent with what the adjacent developments approved as well. With the trails and open space area, they'll relocate or eliminate some redundant bike paths and trails along those areas. They have had an opportunity, which this map illustrates. Up top is the original trails diagram from 2007. If I can get this to work. Down at the bottom is the proposed trail diagram. You'll see in black, it's commonly referred to as the equestrian trail that surrounds most of the development. We call it the multipurpose trail, but they have had, through a lot of discussions and talk, the ability to find connections that otherwise, originally approved, weren't there, which enhanced this trail. Riola Vineyards is down there, so they'll be connecting up at Watt Avenue here and providing a good trail connectivity in this plan area. They've also found ways to increase a north-south connector. You'll see some eliminations in trails from here where it was going through some open space areas to just providing this consistent east-west connector. You'll see the improved north-south here and other ways that they found to eliminate those redundant paths while still providing good north-south and east-west connectors. Jumping through here. From a land use perspective, as I previously mentioned, in the town center, that five acres that was previously proposed as recreation will be reverted back to high-density residential, which is consistent with what the surrounding land uses are there. And again, no proposed increases in residential units. As a comparison, up top is the 2007 plan and should have changed the slide. Down below is the 2015 plan, where you can see a comparison purpose of the land use From a financial perspective, as previously mentioned, the December 2013 action really kickstarted relooking at the public facility side, looking at how the types and size of facilities. And your staff report has quite a bit more detail in that. But the December action outlined the reductions in those types of facilities, which have become memorialized within these agreements. The financial considerations that each department has agreed to is also memorialized in the agreements. I think one of the key things is, is that the developer will be responsible with each phase of constructing our neighborhood parks and trails. They'll be paying fees at building permit issuance for other types of public facilities and the community park. And the county will assume and/or park district, depending on the formation of that, the responsibility for the ultimate construction of those types of facilities as needed when funding's available and service needs arise. In 2014, in April, I think it was a few months after I started at planning, we came to the board with a peer review provided by EPS that changed the way we looked at our fiscal model in terms of services. And we've implemented that peer review in your package today and how we came and derived at what we considered fair and reasonable in providing enough funds to cover the countywide services from both your urban-type services, sheriff, fire, parks, to countywide services such as HHS, et cetera. Implementing the EPS model, the developer also conducted a market review for real estate market conducted by Greg Pakman. And you'll see those values incorporated within the reports there. Ultimately, we ended up at a net deficit of a little over $3 million. There was some, you know, back and forth with staff and the developer, just about a comfort level of that number. And so the developer has proposed, and we feel comfortable with from a countywide services side, of an additional buffer. And you'll note that in your staff report. But basically, what that means is a total deficit of around $6 million, not including parks. And an estimated assessment on the homes of roughly about $450 for those types of services. For the park side, it was a robust park budget of about $4.8 million. And roughly that assessment is about $350 for a homeowner. And so combined, it's about a $10 million deficit and about almost an $800 assessment that would be on the homes. Of course, in your package, you'll see it spread out differently between low-density residential, commercial, et cetera, but that's just an average for ease. We'll be coming back with those types of formations for the CFDs, vetting everything through our bond screening committee. Nexus studies will need to be conducted. CFD reports will need to be brought forward. We'll vet a lot of that through our bond screening committee. In addition, in your package, you'll see fees that the developers require to pay. Some of the key ones, I think, are worth highlighting are the PVSP fee program, which constitutes four components: infrastructure, neighborhood, community park fees, and also a supplemental facility fee for enhanced facilities. That fee, in terms of from the perspective of the residents, the SPA would not be subject to any of those fees except for the infrastructure fee if at time they rezoned to what's noted in your development agreement of SPL PVSP, which is the zoning designation for this specific plan. That basically is if they connect up and receive benefit of those large upfront investments of infrastructure to be able to pay that fee. Otherwise, the park fees, the supplemental facilities fees, they would not be subject to. Other types of fees that this project would be subject to are the tier-two fees. Your development agreement shows the MOUs that we have with Sparta and the implementation of that fee, as well as the countywide fire facility fee they'd be incorporated in. And those are subsequent actions. We'll bring back the fire facility fee planned at a later date to incorporate them in. With that said, from a public outreach perspective, we did go to the West Placer MAC back in November. The MAC had considerable comments regarding particularly Locust Road and the study. It's underway right now from the developers with fair and peers. Unfortunately, we don't have results back. Ken Gramm is here from our Public Works Department as well, if there are questions about that. He can probably more specifically answer that. But that's a process that almost independently from this will continue to go on once we get the data and results back. However, there was a lot of concern with the reduction of park acreage and trails, and the MAC voted to not recommend the applicant's request. We did proceed to the Planning Commission on November 20th and brought forward the applicant's requests there. We all had similar types of discussion regarding, a lot of public comment regarding the Locust Road study, traffic. We had questions regarding clarification of park acreage, which we've included in your staff report. However, the Planning Commission voted to support and recommend to the board the applicant's request for these amendments. The type of actions, and certainly there's a lot of staff here that have participated in this process over the last year that I've been at planning, that are available to answer any questions that you have, we're looking for recommendation from your board to adopt the specific plan amendments, the addendum to the environmental impact report and mitigation monitoring program, as well as the amended and restated development agreement and the ordinance for, excuse me, the development agreement. Did that all from memory? But with that said, certainly there's residents that are here that would like to speak. We'd open it up for public comment and as we're all here to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Questions by board members before we open a public comment?
None at this time.
None at this time. Michael, just quickly, there was some question regarding the ability to get the development agreement circulated and executed and therefore, our ability to take action today. How's that all stand?
The applicant has been able to obtain all of the required signatures. County Council has reviewed it and concurs with this action moving forward this morning.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. We will open this up to public comment at this time. We will begin with the applicant who's requesting modification for the original request here. Approximately, how much time do you think you would need there, Mr. Chairman, for your five minutes? Okay, we'll grant the applicant five minutes. All subsequent speakers will be given the customary three minutes. Mr. Chairman, four is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, Tim Taran on behalf of the Placer Vineyards Development Group. Twenty-two owners, approximately, 88% of the plan area represented. Many of those owners are in the audience today, along with our entire project team, led by our project manager, Kent McDyramid. And I just want to say, we're very pleased to be before you today and very pleased that your staff and very grateful your staff's hard work to get us here. Twenty-two development agreements, all signed, is no small feat. Karen Schwab and my partner Marty Steiner were the primary laborers on that effort, but we also, of course, need to thank Michael Johnson and Michelle Kingsbury for their excellent and dedicated work in getting us here today. So the staff report was excellent, comprehensive, and we really don't have much to add. I just want to say one thing. As you can see from the staff report and the presentation today, there was an emphasis on making this project financially feasible and efficient. But I want to assure you and members of the public that in achieving those sufficiencies, we've not done that in a way that sacrifices quality. The quality of this project still equals or exceeds the quality of all other urban projects in South Placer County, including but not limited to the one right across the street, Sierra Vista. That was very important to you. It's very important to us that we achieve that because we have to compete with those projects, so we want this project to be as good as it can possibly be. So in other words, we've not sacrificed quality. We were just trying to be smarter about how we get it, and that's what we think we've achieved. So with that, we would just request that you approve the staff recommendation today. Send us on our way and happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
I don't see any questions, and you are well within your allocated five minutes.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, anybody else wish to address the board on this item? Ask you to come forward at this time, please. Anybody else who wish to address the board on this item?
Not sure. Good morning. I'm Kelly Walty, and I'm a resident on Elwin Avenue, which is just over the Sacramento County line across Placer at Locust. So I'm at the south end, the south end of Locust Road. And I'm here for my neighbors. And as a community, we're requesting that Locust Road be closed at the south end as well and so that it doesn't impact our low-density rural community. The roads within the western Placer Vineyards development can be made as to not impact our neighborhood by connecting to, I believe it's Pleasant Grove or Rio Linda Boulevard. Those roads, I believe it's Town and Country Center or Eighteenth Street can be connected out to Pleasant Grove so that our road does not need to be impacted. The roads, this will help us to preserve our rural way of life for generations to come. And as a community, we hope that we will receive the same respect given to the residents within Placer County. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for comments, questions, and action.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I did have a couple of questions. Michael, we had quite a bit of concern over the Locust Road question, at least on the Placer County side. That is, that study was supposed to be taken care of in 2007. That is going to be, or is underway right now. Is that correct?
Correct.
Well, it was required to be completed prior to the submission of improvement plans. So there was no date as to when the study needed to be done. It just had to be done prior to the submission of improvement plans.
Okay, so that plan being completed is still consistent with that?
That is correct.
Okay, great. One thing that you had said, Michelle, the fact that the SPA folks that live in the SPA do not have to pay any of the fees for the Placer Vineyard specific plan unless they decide to change their uses, is that a correct statement?
It's on the PVSP fee program. It's section 2.56 of your development agreement. They're not required to pay the neighborhood park fee, community park fee, nor supplemental facility fee. Certainly, you know, they can receive all benefit of parks and trails that are out there. In terms of the infrastructure fee component of that, correct. Only if a property owner entity rezones to, consistent with the specific plan, which is SPL PVSP.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was on the record because I know that there is some concern there. And there was also some changes as a result of some of the residents' concerns. And there was also some changes as a result of some of the residents' concerns, some changes to the development agreement. Section 2.5.6 describes the Placer Vineyard specific plan fee program. That language was tightened up. The second is section 3.20, the CFD formation was also tightened up and identified. And park acreage calculation, the credit for park acreage is delineated in section 3.3.5. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay. My last comment is that I want to thank everybody for keeping an open mind throughout this process. When I came to the Board of Supervisors in 2010, I was told by numerous folks that this project would never go anywhere. And I think we've made a lot of progress in the fact of being able to look at different ways of doing things, both from a county perspective and also as a developer perspective. One of the things I want to emphasize, though, is that I've, this wasn't one of those types of negotiations where the developer just came up and said what they wanted, and we just kind of capitulated. I've got a couple of extra gray hairs, and I've got a sore arm from wrestling with Al Johnson there and his team over how this is going to come about. And I do appreciate the fact that we were able to work together to address your concerns while at the same time addressing the county's needs to be made whole at the end of the day. And that's the one thing that I want to, the final comment that I'm going to make, is that I want to make sure, Andy, and if you can come up for a second, I know that you're, Andy's our chief financial officer, and there's been a lot of discourse, you know, between the different departments about where we are with regards to the financing plan here. And I just want to get confirmation from you as to whether or not this, in your opinion, having looked at the books, that we are at that point where you feel comfortable moving forward.
At this point in time, I do feel comfortable moving forward. The developer and the team that put this whole thing together has actually looked at the buffer, where the buffer addresses main concerns specifically as it relates to property values moving forward and the value of property as the development gets built. And then also the difference between countywide costs and unincorporated area costs, where there was EPS recommendations that came forward that may not have been consistent with what we were looking for, and those changes were made. The buffer takes care of that. And at the same time, we've also looked at this project moving forward from a fiscal perspective and are comfortable with the notation that sales tax in the future is aggressive, but working with the CDRA staff, we've actually looked at the ability of the development to generate that sales tax, and we're comfortable with that moving forward.
Okay. And that's the one thing that I want to emphasize to the public, that so many times when developments come through, it's always a kind of a winner and a loser. And as the song goes, you know, this kind of reflects, you can't always get what you want, but you get what you need, right? All right, thank you. Supervisor Holmes?
First of all, I want to thank you, Supervisor Duran, for your leadership in moving this project forward. It's been on the books ever since I've been elected. And I want to thank county staff and the development community for working together to hammer this thing out. I know we spent a lot of time doing that, and I appreciate the updates I've been given by staff moving this thing forward. So anyhow, I just wanted to let everybody know how grateful I am that we're finally moving this forward. Thank you.
I think the only thing that I want to add is I appreciate staff's willingness to take direction from the board in regard to the changing environment in which we live and are doing business. Obviously, when this plan was first proposed, it was a different economic climate, and developments could absorb more. And this is the first time that staff has had to manage through, number one, a project of this magnitude with so many far-reaching possible ramifications, and number two, do it in combination with a very turbulent economy and trying to forecast with that. What I would remind folks is that this has been a long time getting here, having been approved by the board as part of our general plan in 1994, and it will be a long time in build-out. And service delivery by local governments has changed dramatically since we adopted this plan in 1994, approved our countywide general plan in 1994. I think that was about the time I got my first email address. The county didn't even have a website. There was no Google. There was no Amazon with drone delivery of packages. None of that existed. And so, I say that more as preface to our staff and other folks as we move forward with the development of this project, the university project, the Placer Ranch project, that government always finds itself reacting to what technology and innovation brings to us. It's just the nature of governance. And so, I would encourage our staff and folks in the development community to embrace the innovation as it comes, figure out how to continue as you have done over the last 20 years, continue to provide a high level of customer service to our taxpayers as that innovation happens. And there are a lot of exciting things ahead for all of us, I think, in regard to service delivery. And let's just continue, as you've shown a willingness to do, to keep our eyes open and understand that the map that we see in front of us today likely will not be the ultimate build-out of this project over 20 years, just based on how our patterns will change as humans and how we conduct business with others and interact with others, and how we, as the county, react to those changing societal norms. So, thank you for taking the board's direction and getting us to this point.
Thank you.
With that, I'll enter ten motion.
All the items that are suggested to adopt resolution approving the addendum, certify Placer Vineyard specific plan, final environmental report, adopt a resolution approving the amendments to Placer Vineyard specific plan, with findings as noted in the staff report, adopt an ordinance approving amendments to the Placer Vineyard specific plan, land use development standards with findings as noted in the staff report, and adopt an ordinance approving the second amended and restated development agreement with findings as noted in the staff report.
Mr. Chair, as highlighted by Mr. Duran, staff would recommend that the board take each action separately with acknowledgement of the specific findings associated with each action.
Okay.
And as stated on page one of your board report, page seven in your packet, acknowledgement and acceptance of the finance plan is also required as part of your action.
Okay. So, that being the case, you're looking for four separate motions here, and then a separate motion as well on the finance plan?
Just the acceptance of the finance plan.
Okay, that the board make a motion to accept, so a total of five motions.
Correct.
Individually you're looking for. All right, so as iterated by Supervisor Duran, do we have a motion to approve item number one in the staff report?
So moved.
We have motion Duran, second Holmes, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And thank you very much. Item two?
So moved.
Motion Duran, second Holmes, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item three?
So moved.
I approve, excuse me, motion Duran, second Holmes, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And item four?
So moved.
Motion Duran, second Holmes, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And then adoption of the finance report.
So moved.
Motion Duran, second Holmes, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you very much. Appreciate everybody's work on this.
Thank you.
Okay, since our SEEDRA folks are right here, we'll go ahead and continue with the SEEDRA-related items, and that would be the final action on the Sheridan Community Plan. And I believe Christopher's going to be taking the lead on this item.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and board members. Christopher Schnipp, the Planning Services Division. Before you today is an item to take final action on the Sheridan Community Plan update. This item was continued from your November 4th and November 18th board meetings. It's a series of actions requested. We're looking to adopt a negative declaration in Arata, approve a general plan amendment to adopt the Sheridan Community Plan as amended by the board previously. And this was recommended changes to the draft plan as brought before you. Approve a general plan amendment to the Placer County General Plan Land Use Diagram. That needs to change because we're growing the Sheridan Community Plan boundaries to areas that were previously covered by the general plan. Adopt a zoning consistency ordinance to rezon several properties in the expanded plan area boundaries, and adopt a zoning text amendment to add a definition for live work units, and also town center commercial combining district to the zoning ordinance. And with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
All right. Do we have any questions by board members? Okay, so action was deferred by our board last time this was in front of us based on concerns raised by a resident out in the area who had affected property. Does that resident wish to address the board at this time? And it appears that he does, so then we are going to go ahead and reopen the public hearing in order to accommodate the comments to be heard by the board on the affected property.
Morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Pete DiGiordano, and I'm here to just basically reassure you that I haven't changed my mind. My property was on light industrial when I bought it, and I feel it should remain that way. Also, Jennifer Montgomery was going to talk to Chris and find out, because he had said at the last meeting that I had no opposition to that. I was on record going to a meeting with my brother.
Sir, if you'd direct your comments up here.
I was on record going to a meeting with my brother and meeting with Chris and some staff opposing the downzoning of my property. I also went to a planning commission meeting, which is on record, and opposed it there. So, I would like to know, basically, he misled you on your information. Does anything get done over that? I mean, when a person misrepresents what is said in a meeting, is there any action taken?
Mr. DiGiordano, do you have any questions in regard to the action the board is about to take? We will deal with staff items accordingly, but we have process for that. But do you have any questions or comments regarding the item that is proposed in front of us right now?
Okay, well, that's it. How do you guys feel about it? Is it going to, am I going to be able to keep my zoning, or is that going to change?
Okay, so that what you're asking the board, what you're reiterating is that you want to maintain the industrial zoning on that piece of property?
Yes, I am.
Okay. All right, any other comments for the board?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. DiGiordano.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else wish to address the board at this time? Mr. Nader?
Wayne Nader, as I've mentioned to you at a previous occasion, I grew up in this area, so I'm very sensitive to the uniqueness and the challenges of the Sheridan community. And again, I'd like to recognize the incredible work that the planning department did over the two years in really bringing the community together to develop a comprehensive program. And I think the most critical element of that plan was that they really want to maintain the ruralness, which includes the agricultural component to their community, and that they really stated very strongly that any development, be it residential, commercial, or industrial, be done within the township, the immediate township area. So, I would encourage you to be very sensitive to the community's desire. I would encourage you to support the current plan that's being presented to you today, which includes the changing of that 33 acres from industrial to ag tents, which at one of your meetings, you did decide, instead of originally it was coming to you as an ag 20, and as a concession to help the property owner to be able to develop it into three parcels instead of just one, you allowed a change to the 10-acre ag, which I think was a good concession on your part. So, I would appreciate it if you would, again, be sensitive to the community and support the plan as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go and close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for any further clarification or for action on request by the staff to adopt the Sheridan Community Plan update. Supervisor Duran?
Yes, just a couple of comments. I was not at the last meeting with regards to this matter, although, and I was out of state, but just to show you how much of a fun guy I am, I did watch the hearing, and I did listen to your comments on your particular piece of property. And, you know, while I am very sympathetic, I appreciate your stating your commitment to the country, being a veteran, you know, what strikes me here is we have a community that's made some decisions on land use. And that's very important, and it's very powerful. And that decision-making is an example of what democratic communities do. Now, if I thought for a second, and I've been in situations before the board with regards to property rights, and I'm very, very strong on the individual to be able to do with the property what they want to do with it, so long as they don't intrude on someone else's right. And if I thought for a second that something was being taken from you, that was an aspect of that particular piece of property, I would be standing right with you, and I would be in opposition to it. But being a land speculator, both on price, both on zoning, those aren't things that are engraved in stone, and those aren't things that are attributes to the right of property. Zonings have been going on for, you know, close to 100 years here in the state of California. And I did do some research on zoning in particular situations similar to this that go all the way back to the 1920s. And the question for me is not, can we do it, which obviously we can, but should we do it? And I don't see anything here in the work that's been done by the community or the work that's been done by staff that leads me to believe that they're treating you any differently than they wouldn't treat someone else. That's the same risk that I take when I buy a piece of property in Sheridan or Lincoln or some other jurisdiction, is that that's a part of the risk. So, while I empathize with you, I believe that the Board of Supervisors and this county, if at a time in the future you decide to want to change that use again, that it's the responsibility of the county and the board to take a look at what your uses are and to determine whether or not that change is consistent with that plan and the infrastructure that's out in that particular area. So, I just wanted to make sure that you, even though I wasn't at the last meeting, I took your concerns to heart, and while it pains me to make this decision and move in this direction, that's the direction that I have to move into, so.
Okay, question? No, sir, we've closed public comment. Thank you very much. Questions or comments by the board members? Supervisor, again?
Well, so, you know, obviously, there's a record here, and I think everybody's studied it, and I know that Mr. DiGiordano was attempting to meet with some of my colleagues, and I believe he has, and, you know, essentially, I'm open to suggestions. I don't think any of us, as Supervisor Duran just stated, has been insensitive to the question in front of us, which is to try to balance the needs and concerns and goals of the community with a particular piece of property and the owner of that property. And I think we've tried to accommodate that in a range of ways. I personally had several meetings with Mr. DiGiordano and talked about different options, variety of different options. And it's important to keep in mind that there's a rezoning in this package on a piece of property that he has more immediately in town, to which he's acceptable, because I think it's considered to be an upzoning. This piece he's obviously opposed to. He and I talked about another piece of property that he has in the area adjacent to the community's plan boundaries, for which he contemplated a rezoning there. I think it has some merit for consideration, but we can't consider it this time because the CEQA review did not include that. And clearly, it should go before the community for discussion if, in fact, that should be considered, and there's a process for all of that. So, if some of you in your conversations have other ideas, I'm willing to hear them. My particular position is unchanged from what it was before, which is that we have historically somewhat of a conundrum, I guess you could say, such that in the '60s, I believe, this property was rezoned, which would now be considered this property was rezoned, which would now be considered to be a spot zoning for an industrial use, used to be considered to be incompatible with rural residential. How valuable it is is questionable, because it does not have access to sewer and water regardless. Something could be done there, but it may end up being more of a liability than actually an asset in terms of land use regardless. So I am perfectly comfortable with staff's recommendations, but I'm certainly open to hearing any other solutions that other Board members may have, and I'll leave my comments at that at this point.
Okay, I see no comments by the Board members, so at this time, I'll enter your motion.
Well, in that case, I'll move that we basically adopt staff recommendation items one through five. Do I need to do that individually, Jerry, or...
No.
Okay, that's my motion.
Okay. So we have a motion, Wagan, second was Duran, I'm sorry, was the second?
Yes.
Okay. Second Supervisor Duran, seeing no other lights, so on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None, thank you very much. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on with our Health and Human Services item. This is the Administrative Services Homeless Needs Assessment Update. Graham is going to introduce this item for us.
Yes.
Give it a moment for the comments.
Certainly.
Okay, Graham, go ahead.
Thank you, and good morning, Chairman Euler and members of the Board. I'm Graham Canous from Health and Human Services, and I'm here today to provide you an update on the homeless needs assessment. And really, what I'm going to do is briefly walk through what we're trying to do, what we've done thus far, and where we're headed in this overall effort. Back at your September 23rd Board meeting, your Board approved hiring a consultant to do the countywide needs assessment related to the homeless, and then as an outcome of that, to develop an action plan that would have some policy recommendations for us and the broader community and our partners to consider. Dr. Robert Marbit was hired as a result of that action to look at our existing system capacity and how it's aligned to the needs of the homeless. And what I mean by system capacity, it's what's in place here in the county with our city partners, the nonprofit and faith-based community. So the whole gamut of what's in place related to services in the county's geographical area. The consultant is looking at all different areas of the county, here in the Auburn area, also in South County, and up in Tahoe and points in between, to see what the, to identify those gaps in services and housing, and also to look at specific populations within the homeless and how their, what those needs may be and how our existing system meets those needs. So that's looking at the homeless that are impacted by mental illness or substance abuse-related issues, whether they're veterans or not, the single men and women who are homeless, and other key populations within the community. The consultant will then be developing some potential solutions for all of us to consider, and there's an advisory group that's been established as part of this effort to provide a broad perspective of interested stakeholders. That include the players that I've previously mentioned, plus law enforcement and business and other interested residents within the county. So where we're at now, this is a six-month effort, we're at the midway point. Through this, the consultant has met with many, many stakeholders, and more than 50 of our homeless within the county has met with electeds, both from the county but also from the cities as well, and many, many service and housing providers in the faith-based community. He's analyzed the available data that's already in place, and also has developed and administered a set of surveys to get some additional information about the homeless population in the county and to ask, really to answer some really key questions about the mobility of the population, how it relates to the Auburn area versus the South County Roseville area, how long have the homeless been here, do they have strong connections to our community through friends and family, really to work through the mobility of the population, what the needs are, and to inform the overall assessment for the county. One of the things that's going to come out of this, and from a timing perspective, is that each two years, we do a countywide homeless survey that does a full count, and that's coming up here at the end of this month, and so the timing works really well with this overall assessment effort. The consultant, as we look ahead, will be finalizing the initial assessment and over the coming weeks, through a number of additional folks that he will be meeting with in the community, and then he will be presenting all of the assessment at a public forum, which will be held February 19th at the Placer County Government Center here in Auburn. And that venue is really an open invitation to the public and anyone who's interested in this issue to come and hear directly from the consultant about the state of homelessness within the community, and how it's lined up with the available service and housing options that we have in place through all the different service providers, including the county. As we get closer to that, we'll certainly send out some more details in terms of that public forum, but we'll also, that will allow an opportunity for all of us to work off of the same objective information in terms of what the counts are, the key populations within the homeless, and what those needs are, to then have a community dialogue about the best way to move forward. The consultant will be, will have about a month in between that public forum and actually the presentation of recommendations to allow that, some additional community dialogue to occur. He'll receive some input from folks that have perspective that they would want to share, and then he would come back to your Board and present those recommendations, impacting all different parts of the community, the county, our city partners, certainly the nonprofit and faith-based community as well. And so that would occur about a month prior. We continue to encourage as much participation in this effort as we can get. One thing that we've really learned from the consultant is that having as broad a conversation as possible and really involving all interested residents and key stakeholders in terms of local government and service and housing providers is critical to ensure that both the assessment is accurate, but also that the recommendations are primed for success in our community and can be sustainable. And when he develops those recommendations and presents them to your Board, they will be based upon what has been proven to work in similar communities throughout the country. And so we have some sense for options to move forward on as one of many players in this overall effort. So that's where we're at with the moment, at the moment. And again, reminder to you and the public of that public forum that will hold February 19th over at the Placer County Government Center. I'm available for any questions that you may have at this point in time.
Board members have questions? Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. I know that this will probably be covered. Outside of the Marbit study and the Marbit discussion, we are still looking at resources to address the short-term problem, correct? Such as the Welcome Center providing other types of resources. I know that we've discussed, or we had some initial conversations with a local charter school to try to provide services for this particular clientele. We're still going to be evaluating and trying to find a short-term solution as opposed to waiting for Marbit to address the long-term solution.
We continue to provide outreach to, our staff to directly engage with the homeless and try to bring them into treatment and other service options within the county. Within our general assistance caseload, of which a portion are homeless, we have a pilot that we started down in Rockland to engage them in employment. And we have a few folks that have gone through that program already, a couple of whom have, where it's resulted in a job, which is great news. So we continue to do what we can in order, in terms of reaching out in our role in Health and Human Services.
And I'll be speaking with Jeff later this week, again, about the short-term issue as opposed to the long-term. Thank you.
Supervisor Home?
Thank you, Graham. As far as indigenous services and homeless services that the county provides now, how much in our county budget is allocated toward those types of programs?
In terms of services that would impact the homeless, probably in excess of $2 million.
Annually?
Perhaps closer to three on an annual basis. That covers subsidized housing, particularly for the mentally ill, covers the general assistance that I mentioned, certainly our clinic as a key service provider, and we have a variety of other programs that, relative to housing options, some of which are voucher-based for emergency situations for families and others in the community.
So a homeless person that's seeking services has different programs or different avenues to approach the county for help? Is that correct?
Yes, and there continues to be the Gathering in Shelter option that is in the Roseville area that provides the emergency shelter services that are available in the county currently.
I was during the storm event when we opened up the Welcome Center and the fairgrounds. I did go to each of those locations to see how it was working, and it seemed to work pretty good. It wasn't, you know, exactly comfortable, but at least people had a way to get out of the rain, you know, get some rest. So I just want to let you know I did that. I went and checked them out.
Yes, we did open our Welcome Center for two nights, two full nights, to anyone who was seeking to get out of that recent storm. So we had a number of folks that took us up on that option and stayed there overnight.
And the Gathering in actually accepted more people for that storm event as well, my understanding.
That is correct. There was an additional option, shelter option that was made available for those nights as well here in the Auburn area.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other comments from Board members, at this time, we'll go ahead and open this up to the public. Who would like to address the Board on this item? We'll go ahead, just feel free to line up or have a seat up front, or...
My name is Cherie Home, and I am a member of the Auburn Area Homeless Forum. And Mr. Duran just brought up the point of what are we doing on the emergency shelter, okay, for Auburn? And that is the issue. We, you know, to wait for a report, which I, as a member of a homeless forum, do not even support the fact that we spent $50,000 for someone to come from outside Placer County to analyze what's happening in Placer County. So I would like to remind the Board, our California code on government code, shelter crisis, and we are in a shelter crisis. I mean, it's not only during the nighttime, but it's during the day. Currently, there is a homeless man that is dying of cancer out in the streets right now, okay? So upon a declaration of shelter crisis, the following provisions shall apply during the period of an emergency. We have an emergency. The political subdivision shall be immune from liability for ordinance negligence in the provision of emergency housing pursuant to Section 8698.2. This limitation of liability should apply only to conditions, acts, or emissions directly related to, and which would not occur but for the provision of emergency housing. This section does not limit liability for grossly neglect, reckless, or intentional conduct which causes injury. The provisions of any state or local regulatory statute, regulations, ordinance prescribing standards of housing health or safety shall be suspended to the extent that strict compliance would in any way prevent, hinder, or delay the mitigation of the effects of the shelter crisis. Political subdivisions may, in place of such standards, enact municipal health and safety standards to be operation during the housing emergency, consistent with the ensuing minimal public health and safety. The provisions of this section apply only to additional public facilities open to the homeless pursuant to this chapter. The governing body may declare a shelter crisis and may take such actions as is necessary to carry out the provisions of this chapter upon a finding by that governing body that a significant number of persons within the jurisdiction of the governing body are without the ability to obtain shelter, and that the situation has resulted in a threat to health and safety of those persons. For the purpose of this chapter, the governing body of the state is making a declaration of a shelter crisis pursuant to Paragraph 1. May limit that declaration to any geographical portion of the state. We are in public, we do have an emergency shelter crisis here, especially in North Auburn. I would like to close with a comment from our president, former President FDR. He said, "The test of our progress is not whether we add more to the abundance of those who have much, it is whether we provide enough for those who have too little." And the plan in using the barracks at DeWitt as an emergency shelter would provide enough for those who have too little. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure?
My name is Dan Appel. I pastor the 7th Adventist Church here in the county. I appreciate the opportunity to address you, and I appreciate all the efforts that so many of you are making. This county has a history of dodging the homeless issue. For 15, 20 years now, people have been talking about it, committees have been meeting, and nothing has ever happened. And there are a number of people, significant people in this community, that believe that the time has come to do something, and I appreciate very much. And I think I represent Father Mike, who had to leave, and a number of others who are here and not here, to your appreciation for the Marbit study, for all that you're doing in the long term. We hope that it results in more than just talk, because there's been too much of that and too little action through the years. But there's a different issue, and I think Supervisor Duran mentioned it, and that's the short-term issue. And the homelessness in this area are the responsibility of all of us, but in one real sense, they're your responsibility. There are people out there dying, there are people out there literally, I get calls at the church, huddled in doorways of businesses, and businesses call and say, "Can't you please do something? These people are freezing to death." And as much as I would like to believe that their county services, they're precious and far and few between, and the people who are out there have no idea, if they do exist, how to address them. The Gathering in, much as I deeply respect, Susie DeFosse, does very little for the people in this part of the county. This county invests $300,000 a year in supporting her program, and it benefits Roseville and other areas. It does not, to any significant degree, benefit the people in Auburn. On the average, they take three to six people south. We, on the other hand, when we, as churches here, provide housing, they bring as many as 30, 40 people or more up north. So that money is well-spent for Roseville, which is part of your constituency. Unfortunately, there's not a whole lot spent for Auburn. I would like to plead with you, three nights, at the coldest nights, is not providing emergency shelter. Two or three nights when there was rain, opening up the fairgrounds was nice. Two nights, opening up the Welcome Center and then closing it, was more patronizing our community and the homeless than actually doing something. If you really care about the people in the long run, who are your constituents, you'll have that Welcome Center open every night, or something similar. I think most of the people here have been focused on the barracks. Because, could I have just another minute?
Sure.
Please? Most of the people here have been focused on the barracks because it's the only, seemed to be the only viable alternative in the short term. For whatever reason, that has, there's been a lot of resistance from some of the county's staff to that. There are other buildings there, and there are other places. Any equivalent piece of property that's available would be appreciated, but to just put it off, and put it off, and put it off until the Marbit study's done, means that this winter's going to be done, and you're going to have people who have died because of exposure. People that we care about, people who are your constituents. I have two requests. The first one is that... your constituents. I have two requests. The first one is that those who are concerned have an answer to the question, why when two supervisors in public meeting made an official request that the issue of the barracks beyond the next agenda, it so far does not appear there. As I understand, California state law, as well as parliamentary procedure that this board follows, says that when two supervisors at least request something officially, that it appears, and it seems like the community deserves an answer to know why it doesn't. Secondly, we employ an excellent county executive, somebody who comes with extremely high recommendations, who's very gifted, talented, and creative. And I think we all in this community would like to request that you, as a board, designate, request, and require that the county executive, if the barracks is not an acceptable alternative, in the short term, very quickly provide another alternative. They're there. Just in closing, an attorney friend of mine, when I asked him one time why attorneys continue to put stuff off and delay and delay and delay, he said, "It's very simple, Dan. We want all the emotion to go out of the issue, and the longer we delay, the more emotion will go out of it." We don't have time for those kind of delays. You know, we just finished with the Christmas season, and Scrooge famously was quoted as saying, being interested in decreasing the surplus population. There are a lot of people who consider the homeless in this area to be surplus population. They're not. As somebody who's gotten to know them well, there are people that matter. And I would just plead with you, and I'm sorry I have to speak and run, but I have another meeting, and I apologize, but plead with you for something for the short term. What you're doing in the long term is great. The Marbut study is wonderful, but it doesn't address the needs now. Thank you very much. Any questions, any you have of me?
I don't see any questions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. Leo McFarland, 1261 Vinny Joy Auburn. Father Mike had to leave. He has a funeral in Sacramento, 11:30. So he asked me to give a report on the efforts that St. Teresa's Church provided over the Christmas week. In a very, very quick fashion, he engaged my organization to operate a shelter from December 23 through Saturday night to Sunday morning, December 28, in their gymnasium at St. Teresa's. School is out. There were no planned events for the thing. So we cobbled together very quickly key staff experiencing homeless issues and opened the doors on Tuesday night, December 23. During those five nights, we saw 60 different individuals come take advantage of that shelter service, averaging about 33 persons there a night. In addition, we saw an additional 20 people who were out and about in their own campgrounds who came in for either shower services or the meals that we were serving. So we had a pretty sense that in a five-day operation, that we saw about 80 different people coming in wanting services at St. Teresa's. But more importantly, it was a tremendous learning experience for me, a native Auburnite, to really get a sense of what the makeup of our homeless population is here in Auburn. I was stunned that out of those 60 individuals that came and actually stayed for shelter services during those five days, five of them were deaf. I've never seen that high a percentage of deaf individuals in any services that I've operated. It's usually one or two, but five in a one-week span, it was quite remarkable. But more importantly, you got a sense of the health and welfare of that population during that week, and it was spoken to earlier about some of the very, very severely disabled individuals that came our way. We had three people in wheelchairs and about four or five people who were dependent on assistance to just get around. But one individual, one individual we found in the Bel Air, Father Mike actually found in the Bel Air Shopping Center the very first night, an elderly gentleman, was hunched over his belongings and near death, and brought him in. And luckily, we had an internist physician who was coming in volunteering her time to address the sort of medical issues of some of these individuals. And so we focused a great deal of attention on this gentleman and were able to nurse him over those five days by really never having him leave the facility. So he was with us for 24/7, although we were operating 16 hours a day from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. for those five days. But we put tremendous focus on this individual, who otherwise would have been probably repeatedly taken to the ER for services when he was identified, and, sorry, that was a quick few minutes, nursed him back to health, got him hooked up with Social Security, and we think his life should be turning around significantly in these next few weeks because he's finally going to have the resources to better house the individual. All the compliments in the world to what the county's doing in efforts to have a plan in place that will address it. I understand it's a long-term plan, but from that immediate basis, the effort that St. Teresa's did for those five days really pushed us over the mark in some very positive fashions. And I can't thank the broader community enough, who brought all the cookies and fudge and food that was passing through everybody's house on Christmas that they brought to the shelter. So I think we overfed and oversweetened everybody who attended, and they were very appreciative. Thank you.
Thank you. Just real quick.
Yes.
The data that you gathered, you identified the total number of people, you identified folks with different disabilities. Are you able to make that data available to our folks?
Yes, I captured all of it.
You do have it?
Yes.
Wonderful. If we, as a course of your interaction, if we can get that data, that's very helpful.
Right. I'm going to be working with Grant in the near future, discussing some of the things that we discovered, and anyway.
Great. That's great data. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Appreciate that.
Good morning. I'm Jan Haldeman, local builder. I'm on the Salvation Army Advisory Board. I'm on the Right Hand Auburn Board. I'm an ex-Navy SEAL, fought in Vietnam, was out in the jungle a lot, kind of got a good idea what homelessness is about. I had a daughter that was homeless. She was raped in a park down in Sacramento, died of a drug overdose about four years ago. I know what homelessness is all about. You guys aren't doing enough. I challenge every one of you. Grab a sleeping bag, come with me on some 30-degree night. Let's go out there and camp on the sidewalk, and you can see what it's all about. Then you understand why you're not doing enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, members of the board. Congratulations to the two new. You're lucky. It's over for a year for you. I'd like to hit on a couple of things that have already come up partially. Oh, I'm sorry, Bridget Barnes. I live at 2320 Bean Road and have offices in Penrin, professional offices in Penrin. I'm president of Right Hand Auburn. The most important is that even members of the Right Hand Auburn group are also going to be members of the Citizens Group, giving input on the Marbut study. And as you've already heard, none of us have any, either objection or anything but support for a long-term plan that would address not just the housing needs of the homeless, but the broader issues that various supervisors have spoken to over times, especially integration with employment needs, medical needs, especially mental health needs. But the reality is, as you've already heard, that while we very much think, especially Supervisor Duran and Supervisor Montgomery for their efforts and all of the board in supporting opening the Welcome Center and the Armory for the couple of nights, it was completely inadequate and remains inadequate to meet these needs. What happened was, as soon as school got out at St. Joseph's, which didn't finish until the 19th, we tried to put in line, and Father Mike spearheaded getting the hall open. Our problem over at St. Teresa's is the hall is immediately next to the grade school. So during school time, it's in use, and then most of the nights, it's already booked for things like basketball and everything else kids do. But we had this period of time to use it, and you've heard from Leo, who would be the person that would be operating full-time the services from Right Hand. The first thing I want to say to everyone is, we still want the barracks. If only half of the barracks is available, we'll take half the barracks. But my notes are that between 17 and 19 buildings at DeWitt are no longer vacated today.
You mean are vacated?
They're gone, yeah, empty. Any one of them. Any one of them we would take right now for these uses, if we could have bathrooms, so we could use it at night. If the Welcome Center could be reopened tonight, tomorrow night, Right Hand has raised the money. We will staff it. We'll have somebody there. We will have the food there. We're not asking the county to take this on by themselves. The business community and the faith-based community is prepared to fund this. We hear huge numbers. And believe me, I mean, everybody on this board knows, I'm a conservative Republican, I don't want to spend any taxes, I believe in private enterprise. We're willing to do our share, but we just need your help. That's what we're here for. We're going to be coming back every time until we can work out an emergency shelter situation. Alternatively, if the county would engage with us in allowing us to lease bare land out at DeWitt, which would be automatically zoned for these uses, we'd start that too. But that's a long-term suggestion. I'm just trying to take care of this winter, right now. Anything we can do, that's what we'd like to do. Thank you.
Yeah, please, Supervisor Duran.
I know that Jen Montgomery has done some research into this and the specific issue of the buildings, and there are some parcels at DeWitt that we've identified that could be shelter-ready. So without, you know, making a motion or anything like that, because it's un-agendized, I would encourage Bridget to talk to our HHS folks, and we'll get that facility services information and kind of take a deeper, broader look at what is available.
I'll follow up on it right away.
Hey.
But in addition, to the extent that you can help us get the Welcome Center open again at night, really appreciate anything you can do.
And I would, Jeff is here, I would, after this item, I would speak with Jeff Browns right there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bridget.
Good morning. I'm Tom Loop. I'm a lawyer in Auburn for more than 30 years and lived in Placer County more than 50 years, and I'm on the board of Right Hand Auburn also. We appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today, to speak to you, this board today, and we certainly are very pleased about the Marbut study. We think it's, from what we understand, it's a good thorough effort to learn more about this problem that we have in our community. I've got a lot of experience over the last 30-plus years. Formerly, I was a public defender in this county for quite a few years and have worked with people involved in law violations or incompetency, whether they were mentally ill, or addicted, or veterans, or sometimes even people with disabilities. So I do have some experience with knowing something about this problem in broadest terms. And I think what I would like to remind us is that, you know, when we look at any issue, we all come into with some, usually with some bias, some preconceived notions about what the problem is, whether it's plaster vineyards, and I maybe think it's not a good idea. I don't know enough about it to have an opinion, I will say that. But we look at it and say, "Well, what about this?" We seize on those things that try to support the notion we already have, the bias that we already have for or against an issue. And I think that's what is the danger in this problem with homeless people. How do we handle, how do we help the homeless? There are people who are homeless who truly do want to stay that way, that don't really want to come in, that want to be out there, very free-spirited and probably we could never reach. But that's only a few of them. That's only a few of them. And I don't think we can conclude, because maybe we've had some encounters, or maybe we've had some experience with people who we think would never conform, would never come in out of the cold, for whatever reason it might be, that that's a lot of them, because it's not. There are people in this plight that are veterans and mentally ill and single women out by themselves, disabled people, and the thought of some of those persons being out on Highway 49, some disabled person with mental illness and being struck by a car some cold night when they're trying to find shelter, that, I'm not comfortable with that, and I can't imagine anybody on this board is. That's a stain upon our community for those sorts of things to happen. They have happened for somebody like that, somebody who would like to come in, to not have any place to go to. That's a stain upon our community. We can do better than that, and that's what we're asking. We know that this study is a step in that right direction, but we think that there, we know there's still an urgent need for this winter, and we hope that somehow some things can be done to assist these people in the short term. That's what we're asking for as well. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
How many other folks are going to want to speak on this item, if I may just, okay, I see three more. Okay, thank you very much. Go ahead, sir.
Morning. My name is Jerry Mifsud. I have a television show here on Channel 20, and I write in the Free Newspaper here in town, the Placer Sentinel. I've been asked by the homeless people on Mickelson, who I see on a daily basis, to come here and speak. So I decided to appear like them. It's interesting, when I came here last month, I had my Never-Give-Up hat on, and I looked all sharp, and I was shaved, and you greeted me when I walked in, and hi, Jerry, and that kind of business. It's interesting, today, nobody gave me a second look. They gave me one look. As soon as they see a torn shirt or something, and I'm not going to rip off my clothes, but maybe, I'm not sure. There's no guarantees. Because I'm quite disturbed by what's taking place here. It was kind of hopeful that you would offer something to Bridget here to look into, look into, look into. These studies have taken place already once before, with the city having to address the zoning. They were pretty zoned out about the zoning that they put in next to the Fox statues, because nothing's going to happen there. What a waste of time. And they did studies. I did ask the mayor this morning, do those studies that took place by the city, do they transfer to you? Because you're going to study yourself to death while people are dying. I mean, this is ridiculous. So from what I understand, Nevada City is transporting people on the way to the Gathering In but dropping them off here in Auburn. And for instance, a wheelchair-bound person is dropped off with her better half at a freeway entrance here in town by Nevada City, and our law enforcement is clueless on what to do about it. And that brings to attention, as we address issues like domestic violence, and we want to empower our law enforcement people on how to handle that, they do not know how to make the inroads to directing a homeless person. And that's not good. But the city council kicked the can down the road. Those were words from Mike Holmes, brave words, to admit what they were mistaken about. They just wanted to avoid any penalties, so they zone out there. So that can is right here. And Jim, I've talked to some of your supporters, and these aren't going to be supporters anymore, because they've told me that you're not returning their questions when they're bringing questions up about this. Now, I'm not saying this is indicative of how you're handling it, Jim. This is just what I'm hearing, because I'm a news reporter. I'm an investigative reporter. And to hear that, that your own constituents aren't getting returned calls back, is real concerning. But Utah has captured how to handle homelessness. 75% of their homelessness is dropped by 75%. The last time I was here, I gave you the remedy that Riverside City, a county south of us, that had completed their 10-year plan and found solutions. I brought their 80 pages, and I'd like to ask, did any one of you read those? I gave them all to you. Did anyone was able to read that? Thank you, Jennifer. But also, Jennifer, you know, you and someone else here had given the impression that we'd be on the agenda, an agenda, and I know you gave me an answer this morning. be on the agenda, an agenda, and I know you gave me an answer this morning, and I appreciate that, but we're not on an agenda. And it's interesting that this issue takes place here now at the end. When we had a bigger crowd in here, was it we purposely put to the end so we'd influence the fused amount of people? When actually, we just want to influence you.
Sir, if you could please conclude your remarks here.
So I much appreciate, as we move towards desperate people, for national disasters when they happen, why are we not moving with the same urgency towards our homeless people? Because they are, it is a disaster how we're not approaching them. We're just asking for something temporary here, not permanent. Do the studies for the long-term thing, maybe we will get a shelter. I'm in sheer doubt about that, but at least in a temporary situation, as you suggested, get something open so we could feel comfortable and rest at night, because they're not looking any better. Remember, these people used to look like me and you. Well, not like me, but like you. You know, they all were fresh and clean one day, and as soon as they got dirty, we don't want to have any disregard of them. But they were you, they were us. So I appeal to you to please do what you can. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll give you some copies of.
Okay, if you just leave them in the court of the board, they'd be great. Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right. The other folks that indicated they want to speak, I think I saw three more hands.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, members of the board. My name is Mary Najjar, one of the owners at Najjar Vineyards and Winery. And I want to start by thanking you very, very much for listening to us last time when we were here, and for moving so swiftly and opening the Welcome Center for the two nights for the storm. I believe it was initially supposed to be one night, and then you, excuse me, you opened it for an additional night to shelter the homeless. So thank you very much for doing that. I was actually one of the people, and I know there's several in here in the room, who, when we got the good news, went out in the street and started to find them and let them know that it was going to be open for them and for the storm. And they were very, very appreciative. You could see the hope and gratefulness in their eyes. They couldn't believe somebody really cared enough, you know? So thank you very much. We wish it could have been open for a little longer, but hopefully here, we're going to find a solution for that together. I feel like Pastor Dan, Bridget, and a lot of people in here who spoke, that it is urgent to find a short-term solution for them for this winter, for the very cold, and then for the long-term, of course, with the survey to find something. But just for the short term, we would so appreciate if you listen to us and try to do something about this and find a solution. So that's why, that's it, that's pretty much it. I just, short and sweet, just wanted to say thank you very much, and we hope that you'll consider this, whether it's the barracks or any one of the empty buildings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of Auburn, also in the Auburn Area Homeless Forum, and I do sit in with the Right Hand Auburn Group. I just basically have two quick points. One, this needs to be agendized so that we can have a proper discussion back and forth, hearing your concerns. We thought we had that pretty much settled at our last meeting, we were surprised we weren't on the agenda this time. Secondly, I think, it hit me, listening to all of this today, and it kind of gelled, that you are looking on this as though this is some type of county responsibility, that you are a player in what we're asking for. We're basically asking for you to lease property, lease a building to us out at DeWitt, like you would any other nonprofit group, be it the Cat House, be it the Boy Scouts, any other nonprofit that sat out there with zero rent, Senior Center. But somehow, the biases, as were mentioned, have seemed to inform the opinion of staff, who seems to be somehow the tail wagging the dog, and we cannot even get this on an agenda. As some of the speakers have said, could we have another building if Facilities doesn't want us to occupy the barracks? In any case, and as to the Marbut study, it seems like this project should go parallel. It's just contemporaneous that we submitted our proposal at the same time Marbut was hired. You are not asking Gathering Inn to suspend their operations while the Marbut study is in progress. We just happened to have our proposal and submitted it, and then you hired Mr. Marbut, and now our project is considered to be untimely. So again, could we just pare back the county feeling like it's involved in our nonprofit? We just want to provide services, perhaps help our people who are homeless get into county services, help streamline them, take them off the DeWitt lawn, put them into a building at night, and that's really all we're asking. Thank you.
Thank you. And after this gentleman, was there anybody else? Okay, you'll be our last speaker, sir.
Don't be afraid. Gary Mapon, three fifty Cuckoo Court.
Court, got it, yeah.
And I wasn't going to talk until I saw Jennifer come in, and I felt like I owed it to her.
Thanks, Gary.
Basically, kind of like to recap what I'd kind of seen happen in the last maybe sixty, ninety days, Right Hand Auburn, Auburn Area Homeless Forum, have each basically come to the Board of Supervisors and asked to be put on the agenda. And my perception was, we were going to be on the agenda a couple of times, but it never really happened. In the most recent conversation I had with anybody on staff was, well, we can't put you on the agenda because we have Costco and we have the budget. So all of a sudden, we got kicked to the back of the bus. So the one thing you can't kick to the back of the bus, though, is the temporary needs of the homeless right now should not be based on today's weather report. It can't be you get up and you go, okay, well, the Farmers' Almanac says it's going to rain for three days, quick, let's go open up the Welcome Center, let's go to the fairgrounds and open it up. As soon as we get done with that feel-good, look-good little activity, we'll kick them out, and then we'll fall back on Marbut's report. So right now, we've been, it's all procrastination. We've been put off now again until February nineteenth, basically, until Marbut has a chance to talk about what he would like to see happen or what he recommends. But that doesn't take care of what we've got right now today. The Catholic Church shouldn't have to open up for four or five days to take care of the homeless during a storm or a cold spell. We should be taking care of them right now, today, with the resources we have. And the best resources we have are DeWitt, the county-owned property that belongs to the taxpayers. The taxpayers need to have an opportunity to talk about what they'd like to see happen to lessen the impacts of homelessness. You guys aren't doing it. All you're doing is, and I hate to use the phrase, kicking the can down the road, but that's all we're doing. We're going to get into another ten-year plan. I mean, I see it all over every place you go. You talk about ten-year plan, here we are, 2014, well, now we're 2015. Ten-year plan never got implemented. So all the efforts that were put in by all the people, the faith-based groups, the nonprofits, county staff, nothing's happened. So we're just sitting here right now with nothing. You know, we talk about where can we put them? As much as I'd like to even do a campsite at DeWitt, is that the right thing to do when you've already got the facilities available? You've got seventeen, eighteen, nineteen vacant buildings. We should be meeting right now with facilities, with HHS, with all the different groups, and talking about where can we put the homeless right now? You've got Volunteers of America that successfully just did four or five days at St. Teresa's, and that's professionally run, no problems. They're going to submit their list of, you know, data to the board. We could set up, as much as I don't want to, we could set up a temporary campground at DeWitt with tents, quarter pots, we can have it fenced off in a weekend. And you've got everything right there that the homeless need for services, and you've got, well, the Sheriff's Department, they're rostering them anyway, so they'll be out there, you know, checking on them all night long, or waking them up at two in the morning to tell them, get your tents out of here. So the opportunity is here right now, and I don't know why I need to keep coming up here and just beating my drum. You've got all the resources to do it right now, today. You just need to give us a place to do it. You need to give us the people to meet with. We were told we could make a presentation to staff. We never even got a chance to make a presentation. So how are you going to put us on the agenda without a staff report? So we can get off the dime and do something right. Any questions? Probably not.
Nope. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, with that, we will, with that, we will close the public comment on this item. While this was agendized simply for the board to receive an update, we clearly have been given more than an update, and we have been asked to consider agendizing this item. And so I want to have that discussion. I am, I'm certainly willing to have the board in a position where we can actually take action to either approve or not, based on the data presented to the board in support or in opposition to the idea of using county facilities for the purpose as described. So I see no reason why our board, as a deliberative body, shouldn't entertain the conversation and make a decision as to whether or not definitively, once and for all, we want to use county facilities for the purpose as described. That conversation will obviously need to include all of the issues that we have to consider, not just the costs associated with that, costs that at this time, unless HHS tells me otherwise, would be unbudgeted costs, but costs nonetheless. Certainly not insignificant would be the legal liability that the county might have in utilizing property, whether it's existing barracks or any of the other buildings. And as I mentioned, the other buildings in the context of liability, chief among those are ADA compliance issues associated with those buildings that were designed before we had an Americans with Disabilities Act, other things such as the asbestos that I know exists in a number of those buildings. So it's not as simple, even with the tremendous support that the private sector is offering, it's not as simple as just saying, tomorrow, we're going to open up some doors. However, that being said, that's why we're here. That's why this board is here, is to have this conversation, hear from staff what the concerns are, and then our board is charged with weighing, do the benefits outweigh the concerns, and do we believe that we have the resources to overcome those concerns? And so as chairman, I will agendize an item for that purpose. The only question will be when? Our next board meeting is on the twentieth, and it's up in Tahoe, and I don't want to ask this group to make the trip up to Tahoe. Our next subsequent board meeting, I believe, is February third. Is February third. And so now we run into the issue of that being an entire month away in the coldest part of the year, and what can we do about that? So having indicated that as chairman, I'm willing to agendize this, the conversation that I would like to have with board members and with staff is, is there a, number one, a willingness by the board, number two, an ability by staff to gather data necessary in order to possibly have a special meeting of the board prior to our scheduled board meeting on February third, where we can take up this item and not have to wait what's essentially an entire month during the coldest part of the year, as these needs exist? So I would now open it up to my colleagues to express their thoughts in regard to a special meeting to address this, and we'll take from there. Jennifer, your light was on first.
Thank you. I want to start by saying thank you, Chairman Yular. Supervisor Duran, I almost called you Chairman Duran, I got used to that. Supervisor Duran and I have been working with Father Mike and with Pastor Dan to try to figure out what we can do now in the short term, understanding that the Marbut study is coming forward. And, you know, frankly, I think none of us really realized the impediments that exist to doing something right now, which doesn't mean we can't do something right now. But having a third voice on the Board of Supervisors saying, let's move forward with this and do something right now, is really critically important, because there's five of us. And so as I always remind everyone, it takes three votes to get anything done at the Board of Supervisors.
And sometimes not even then.
And sometimes not even then, exactly, yeah. But I also really want to take the opportunity to thank Father Mike and Pastor Dan for the number of meetings they've had with us and the ideas that they've come up with and proposed. One of the, one of the things that they were working on is trying to identify private pieces of property. Supervisor Duran and I are looking at public pieces of property to see what is appropriately zoned, what does meet, you know, the state building habitation requirements, and how we make that happen quickly. So yes, I'm all in for a special meeting, and I think we should do that as quickly as possible. In fact, I would like to do that, if possible, before our Tahoe meeting.
I appreciate that. I think that's going to be more a function of when we get to the point of having the conversation with staff about the ability to gather the data. We obviously, this is going to require significant input from County Council's office as to, because our board has to make this decision with all of the information in front of us in terms of what we are truly opening ourselves up to here. Obviously, the participation by the various organizations will be greatly helpful in reducing operational costs, but my primary concern, quite frankly, is the issue of litigation associated with the use of facilities. If something happens, who's responsible? And that's a decision that we have to make with the concern of our entire community, not just the homeless community, but our entire community in mind. So I think let's have our conversation regarding the board's willingness to do a special board meeting so we can get back here, assuming staff can accommodate that, but I just need at least three voices saying we will consider a special meeting, and then we can have the conversation about how soon we can have that. So Supervisor Duran, your light was on next.
Yes, I do appreciate the fact that we're having this discussion now. It sounds to me like we've got actually three ships moving, and I think the appropriate thing in the short term, because I know that there are less concerns with the Welcome Center or something like that, and immediacy, to have that ship go and have the Right Hand folks speak with Jeff, like I had suggested, immediately about those possibilities. I also appreciate the fact that we're looking at this from a broad context, because I do agree, being an attorney myself, there are a tremendous amount of things. I mean, if we're talking about space right now, I think we're at half. It's not just a matter of just opening the door and putting a sign up and saying, yes, there are a tremendous amount of things that are going on and are going to have to be analyzed. So that's the second ship. The third ship, obviously, is a long-term solution. So, and also just to note, I will be out of the country on the third of February, so I would appreciate a special meeting outside of Tahoe and outside, and before February third, to, you know, to address this issue. The other, the final comment I wanted to make is, I kind of wanted to dispel any conspiracy theory, if you will, with regards to the Marbut study. The timing of the Marbut study actually was a function of our working with the Lazarus Project to take a look at the long-term solution with regards to transitional housing programs, mental health, down in the valley, that would have fingers, I anticipate, that would reach up to Auburn and would go past Auburn up to Tahoe. So the timing of the hiring of the Marbut study was primarily to look at the broader context of what, as a county, our homeless situation was and to provide those types of recommendations. It had no nexus to this issue particularly right here with regards to North Auburn's homeless. So I kind of want to dispel that, because that was in, that's been in the works for probably the last two years. So it's just coincidental that we have a Marbut study that's going to be talking about the broader context, that's going to have an Auburn component, obviously, to it for the data points that are going to be discussed in later this month. for the data points that are going to be discussed in later this month. So, I just kind of want to let everybody know, there is no hocus pocus here. There wasn't, you know, any malfeasance in having that study. It's just a component of moving the process forward and also taking the next step after this 10-year plan. So, thank you.
Supervisor, why again?
So, I think the specific question, Kirk, that you're posing is whether or not I'd be willing to have a special meeting. The answer is yes. I just want to be realistic and communicate it to the community that it's difficult with our schedules to get that done and snapping your fingers or getting something done. So, I think I'm just requesting your expectations be realistic. And with that, I'll make a couple of comments also. As I understand that the question in front of us, keeping in mind the ships that Supervisor Duran articulately described, I completely share that vision. So, I think the question before us is, is there something that the board might do strategically in the short run while we're looking more thoroughly at this issue for a long-term strategic solution? And so, just since you know we're not sitting up here and ignoring what you say and I understand some of the frustration and Jan, I can only imagine your experience, so my heart goes out to you. I'm terribly saddened by that and I'm not insensitive to it. But, your comment was, you know, we're not doing enough and I don't dispute that. But, the reality is, for us, there's, if we had limitless resources, I doubt that we could do enough. If you can take a look at the details behind the actual issue itself, you know, we just can't solve all the world problems. Can we do more? I am sure we can, but we want to make sure that we use our resources wisely and intelligently, both in the short run and the long run. So, I just want, I just wanted to phrase it that way. Since this issue has come forward, I personally have met with our department, talked more thoroughly about what's happening with this study. I want to emphasize Jack's comments about how the study came forward and that it had nothing to do with trying to circumvent or dance around the question in front of us. I've also met with Bridget and a group of constituents and supporters of that. We're receptive to finding. It's not going to, we're not going to respond to another 10-year study, Gary, that just gets shelved somewhere. We're interested in doing something and I think it's important that all of us articulate that now. So, I'm just taking my time to do that.
Okay. So, clearly, there's concurrence that the board will do a special meeting to address this. Now, the question comes back to conversation with staff. If Graham, you want to come up? And we need to kind of figure out, okay, from a timing standpoint, how long, Jerry, Graham, is Jeff still here? There he is. Perhaps Jeff is the right one? I don't know. You guys decide on yourselves. From a timing standpoint, given the data that we have at this time, given the data that's available to us by the recent experience, when do you think you would be able to prepare for the board the packet that we would need with the various deliberative points where we could analyze pros and cons of moving forward, whether it's barracks, any of our other facilities, whatever the case may be?
Yeah, I, we can certainly meet most any deadline in regards to services. Dr. Marbit, tying back to that study, he's talking about having a, we're having a community meeting scheduled for February. I think the key person that we really need to involve in this discussion is Mary Dietrich with Facilities, because she is really going to have more information as to what might potentially be available in regards to county property. So, that's a piece that our department really doesn't have the most detailed information on.
I'm sure Mr. Bosch will make sure that if he hears it's priority of our board, that that happens. So, what, from the standpoint of the kind of immediate needs assessment, assuming some of the data that we're hearing about 60 folks rotating through a five-day period with an additional X number of them that could possibly utilize these facilities, when you start drilling down on the numbers, that obviously translates into some kind of a space analysis that translates into some kind of a flow analysis, logistics for food support, all those other things, a security analysis that would have to be done associated with that as well. So, that's really what I'm looking at is, while we have Mr. Bosch work with Facilities in figuring out what buildings might accommodate, we then have to know what it is we're going to accommodate. So, that's the part that I think comes back on you guys. What kind of a turnaround do you think we might be looking at for something like that?
Yeah, I think we could certainly respond within a few weeks.
Yeah, I think a week and then a 20th.
Okay.
What we would want to do is to try to extract as much data that's been gathered by Dr. Marbit as possible, ensure that the data from St. Teresa and other surveys that have been done recently that he's currently pulling together, that we can extract as much as possible to ensure that the board has an informed decision. So, exactly where he's at at this moment in that process, I'm not sure. But, we would connect with him immediately to try to work that out as quick of a timeline as would be workable for the board.
Okay. And Jennifer, you are?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, I would also suggest that you reach out to Tim Wagner at the Building Department. He and I had a preliminary conversation a couple of weeks ago where he mentioned that there were possibly some emergency or short-term waivers of some California and federal building codes that we might be able to use during this process. Because, again, you know, my concern is like the barracks where there's a lot of physical impediments in the building, just in terms of the building code and what's required. We don't want to have that same issue with other buildings that we may potentially identify at DeWitt.
Okay.
And I just want to remind the board that we have video conference Tahoe meetings to allow participation from Auburn in the past.
Yeah, I, I'd much rather be here and do it with folks here present. But, thank you. Yeah, Supervisor Holmes?
Oh, I have no objection to agendizing the item. Many of my questions that I was going to ask are the same ones you directed to staff. I'm just looking at my calendar. I know we're going to be up in Tahoe. I'm looking at the 22nd, Thursday. I don't know if that would work for everyone. Is that a?
Thursday, the 22nd is what you're thinking?
Well, I don't know. I don't give staff enough time, but...
We'll make the deadline work. You guys pick the date, we'll make the date work.
Jack and Robert, thoughts on the 22nd?
I should be in town. I don't...
Okay. And do we want to do a morning meeting, afternoon? What's your, what's the pleasure?
Morning would be preferable.
Morning? Okay, so, normal nine o'clock start?
I'll do 22nd.
22nd?
That works.
Okay. All right, we'll go ahead and direct staff to prepare a special meeting of the board for Thursday, the 22nd, for the purpose of allowing the board to make some decisions on the county's participation in this, one way or the other. The only thing I want to add is, there's been numerous references to the board kicking the can down the road. And, in my mind, nothing could be further from the truth. This is a deliberative body. Deliberative being the operative word. We cannot react impetuously to emotional pleas. And, I understand the emotional pleas. I have family members who have experienced homelessness from time to time. And, I understand that at that particular moment, it's everything. This board cannot make a decision that adversely affects the entirety of the county for one particular population in the county, whether it's a land use-related decision, whether it's a facilities decision, whether it's a services decision. So, unfortunately, it does take time to gather all of the information that we need to make a decision to address this. But, hopefully, what you see today is that we are willing to hold ourselves accountable to you, to hear the information, the facts presented to us, and we are willing to make a decision based on that information. And so, with that, we look forward to seeing, I'm sure, most of you back here on the 22nd. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we... What's that?
Good stamina wise.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Just have a couple items left. All right, just a couple of quick items left. We have our second Health and Human Services related item. This is a contract amendment. And, I see Andy, so who's going to kick us off here? Susan, it's Susan's item, but it's...
You would like this, Andy. Take it. Good morning, Chairman Yular, members of the board. This morning, we are asking for your board's approval of an agreement with Hewlett Packard Enterprise Services for the Cal-Win Information Network, Cal-Win System Maintenance and Operations for a five-year term beginning February 1st, 2015, through July 31st, 2020. The total consortium expenditures for the five-year term are $251,183,475. Placer's share of the consortium cost over that five-year term is $2,846,435, with a net county cost of $194,551. State approval of the contract, which actually begins August 1st, 2015, included a six-month transition period to begin February 1st to set up contractually required provisions such as new software development and tracking tools, a backup data center, and a new project facility site in Roseville. All California counties are required by federal and state law to have an automated eligibility and benefit delivery system. The Cal-Win computer system is currently used by a consortium of 18 counties, including Placer. The 18 counties have joined together to share the cost and to maximize efficiencies in the development and operation of the system. The Cal-Win system determines client eligibility for human services assistance programs, issues benefits, interfaces with other state computer systems, including child support, assures that recipients are not receiving benefits in another California county, and tracks the progress of clients in completing tasks necessary to achieve self-sufficiency. In Placer, the Cal-Win system facilitates the processing of over 3,000 applications for assistance each month and validates the accuracy of eligibility and benefit determinations. Your board originally approved Placer County becoming a member of the Cal-Win Computer System Consortium in 1999, including an agreement with HP Enterprise Services for Cal-Win Development, Implementation, Maintenance, and Operations. The existing contract is set to expire on July 31st, 2015. The consortium of 18 counties issued an RFP in 2013 and HP was a successful bidder. Since the contract is between all 18 counties in the consortium and HP, each of the 18 boards of supervisors must approve the contract in January 2015. Both the current contract and the proposed contract reflect needed compromises to continue to operate and maintain a computer system for the benefit of all of the 18 individual counties. The new contract contains a significant number of improvements over the existing contract as well as retention of important protections and remedies currently available to the consortium counties. Placer County's share of expenditures for this five-year contract is $2,846,435, including $2,651,884 in federal and state funding and $194,551 in required county general fund match. Each fiscal year's share of these costs will be included in the department's requested budgets over the next five years. Therefore, we're asking for your board's approval of this request and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions about board members? I don't see any questions. Any member of the...oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Duran, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I wasn't quick on my switch. I noticed that there are quite a few of the large counties that are on this list of users of this Cal-Win system. Is this pretty much the standard for the state?
It is. Cal-Win is one of three automated eligibility systems in the state and several of the large counties are part of the Cal-Win Consortium.
Okay. All right. And you find that this is, obviously, you're coming back to us for additional contract terms on it, you find that this is the best...
This meets our needs, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any member of the public have any questions, board on this item? Seeing none, we have motion?
Mr. Purple?
That was a motion by Montgomery and second by Holmes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much and moving to item eight. Andy. Oh, it's your turn, Andy. You're in such a hurry to get up here before.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the board. Andy Heath with the County Executive's Office. My pleasure to bring to you today a status report on the unfunded liabilities as they relate to the other post-employment benefits, which is the health benefits that are accrued by existing retirees and future retirees, and the California Employees Public Retirement System, which is a retirement system for both the miscellaneous and the safety employees at the county. And then, look at the, look at an overview of both of those and then policy recommendations as we move forward. As the budget was being prepared for the current year, your board did direct the offices of the County Executive, the Treasurer Task Collector, and the Auditor Controller to look at the unfunded liabilities, particularly the unfunded accrued liabilities related to the OPEB and the CalPERS retirement systems. Actuarial reports were run, we'll go through those very briefly, and your board is being asked to adopt a resolution approving certain revisions to the OPEB policy as it exists in the current financial policies that are listed in the budget, and also to appropriate 3.2 million, just over $3.2 million of funding that is available and was set aside as part of the final budget process in an assigned fund balance related to funding for unfunded liabilities pursuant to this analysis. Looking specifically at the current status of the unfunded liabilities, the OPEB or the health benefits that are accrued by the county employees and existing retirees, total liability now exists at about $350 million. Of that $350 million, approximately $129 million is currently unfunded and represents a funded level of about 63.2%. The $9.7 million number that you see for the annual cost for the coming fiscal year in 1516 only represents the annual cost related to the amortization of that unfunded liability. On top of that, there's an additional $12 to $13 million that's anticipated to be paid for existing retiree benefits, which is the pay-as-you-go component associated with the OPEB. Similarly, in the CalPERS plans, we have $314 million and $971 million in total liability for the safety and the miscellaneous employees respectively. The unfunded portion is $111 million and just over $322 million for both of those plans, and they're funded at approximately 65, 66% as you can see. The annual cost for the amortized portion, which is amortized over a 30-year period for CalPERS, is approximately $6 million for the safety plan and about $19.7 million for the miscellaneous plan. On top of that, there's an additional amount that actually funds the pay-as-you-go component for the normal cost and that total normal cost or the budgeted cost for retirees in CalPERS is about $44 million a year for both plans in the county. The OPEB is amortized over a 24-year period. It's important to note that we do a fresh start with the OPEB every year where the actuary actually goes in and recalculates what the OPEB liability needs to be, consistent with a decrementing period of time, where 24 years effective with fiscal year 201516. CalPERS does, however, have the 30-year plan where most of the unfunded liability is amortized over that 30-year period. Looking specifically as an overview of each liability and where it's come over the last several years, you can see with the OPEB, the unfunded liability has gone from approximately $50 million. We have funded $50 million up to about $240 million as it stands today for the OPEB. So, the OPEB funded portion has gone from about 14.6% at the end of 2009, fiscal year 2008, 2009, and at the end of 6/3014, fiscal year 1314, about 63.2% of that liability is funded. You can see that the unfunded liability has been decreasing with the bars right there and that's primarily due to the conservativeness that's built into the actual actuaries that are prepared, where there's a, health benefits are assumed to increase 6.9% to 7.9% per year. And additionally, the discount rate has been lowered from 7.61% to 7.33% effective with the 6/302014 number. with the 6/30/2014 number, reflecting conservatism as well. Also, one of the things that's impacting the OPEB unfunded liability is your Board's policy to actually fund an upfront OPEB component for all the new employees that come into the county, where approximately $37,000, which represents half of the costs associated with funding a future employee, is added to the amount that is paid for the OPEB to the California Employees' Benefit Retirement Trust. Looking specifically at both of the Calpers plans, you can see that there's a significant amount of volatility that's associated with these plans over time, where the county at one point in time, at the end of 2006-7 fiscal year, was actually funded 94.5% for the total amount that was- that represented the liability related to the miscellaneous plan. Today however, as of 6/30/13, which is the date of the last actuary that's been received by Calpers, we're funded about 66.8%. You can see that red line, which represents the amount of the liability that is funded for the county, is very squiggly, to just say that, and that represents all of the changes that have been built into the Calpers system over the last several years, where there are changes to the smoothing methodology by which rate increases are implemented, there are changes to the discount rate, that we lowered the discount rate from 7.75% to 7.5%. And additionally, there have been other changes as well that impact those rates as we move forward. That's the miscellaneous plan, and then you can see that a similar situation exists for the safety plan, where we were at one point in time funded 86.6% as of 6/30/2007, and today about 64.5%. These funds are invested in the Calpers Retirement Trust, which is managed completely by Calpers. The county really doesn't have an option at this point in time where those funds are invested, but they do belong to the county, and that's where they are. Looking at the OPEB plan specifically, Treasurer Task Collector, the Auditor Controller, and I actually went in and looked at what options might exist to fund the OPEB in the future, given where we're at today with the OPEB and its funding status. What this slide represents is how the actuarial costs, or the ARC, which is the annual required contribution, is the amount that's required to be funded for the OPEB on an ongoing basis. You have a pay-as-you-go amount, which represents the retiree costs that the county does pay, and that's the $12 to $13 million per year that I represent, that I mentioned, and then you also have the unfunded actuarial accrued liability amortized cost that for the OPEB is being amortized over a 24-year period of time. The way the county funds that is we do have a per-position payroll cost that's computed every year, that's just a couple of years ago, was $7,000 per funded employee in the county, but because of the experience that we have in the OPEB and the good experience that we've had with funding that plan, it's actually about $4,332 with this current year's budget. So you can see that that amortized cost, based on the current period that we're using to calculate the OPEB, which is 24 years, decrementing one year at a time, has come down because of the experience that we've seen in the OPEB plan. Additionally, as part of the amortized cost, or going against the amortized cost, we also do fund the upfront OPEB, which has varied significantly over the last several years, depending on the number of new employees that come into the county. We've had as much as $6 million paid for the upfront OPEB, and this year approximately $3.5 million is budgeted to be paid into the upfront OPEB component. So you can see on the bottom there, the annual county funding is typically always greater than the annual required contribution to the OPEB pursuant to the actuarial analysis We looked at the OPEB plan and tried to come up with ways to leverage the existing levels of OPEB funding. That is the amount that we actually fund towards the ARC in addition to the amount that's paid for the upfront OPEB, with the experience that we have seen in the California Employees' Retirement Benefit Trust, to set in motion a plan to fully fund the unfunded liability in a shorter period of time. We looked at existing levels of budgetary resources that are dedicated on an ongoing basis, where 1415, the current fiscal year, serves as the base, looking at moving forward. And you can see here that for the OPEB, we actually have an amortization amount in 1415 of about $9.7 million, and with the recent actuarial analysis that we received at the end of October, updated, the 1516 amount ironically is about $9.7 million as well. Then we also had different iterations run for a number of other years to see how much the cost would be if we lowered the 24-year amount to something less than that. 15-year plan came out to about $12.7 million, and the 12-year plan came to about $14.8 million. The upfront OPEB component, you can see that in 1415, about $3.6 million in upfront OPEB that is budgeted for payment to the servit. However, in 1516, it's unknown at this point in time. We have not put the budget together for 1516 yet, and it would depend on how much departments would actually budget for that number before we would actually know that, and that could vary. It's important to note that over the last couple of years, the county has been hiring more employees as it comes out of the recession. However, at some point in time in the future, that's expected to level off, so it's assumed that the upfront OPEB component will start to level off as well and maybe even decrease. What we did with the 15-year and the 12-year plan was we assumed that there would be no upfront OPEB paid, and that assumption's being made because the cost for 1415 is about $13.3 million that's actually going towards the unfunded liability, and in the 15-year plan, you can see it's pretty close, it's about $600,000 less than in 1415 for a 15-year plan, which would encompass both the ARC and the upfront OPEB that is currently paid into a lower amount moving forward.
So Andy, just to be clear on that point, what you're saying is by adopting the 15-year plan, we net have roughly the same impact over that period of time as we do with today's practice of simply paying the ARC plus the upfront, but this eliminates the barrier that departments have for the upfront, for the individual position?
Correct, correct. So it's highly dependent on the amount of funds that are budgeted on an ongoing basis after 1516.
Right.
That would- that we would need to ensure that we are continuing to pay down that unfunded liability as aggressively as we have now.
Okay, thank you.
So this just sets in place a constant rate over the next 15 years at a minimum, absent any other additional one-time funding that can be directed by your Board to be put towards the upfront OPEB, which we're also recommending with this report.
Yeah.
That would ultimately buy that OPEB down as well. And then similarly, in the 12-year plan, it's about $14.8 million, which compared to this year would require an additional $1.5 million in budgetary resources directed to that plan moving forward on an ongoing basis.
Okay.
Just some of the benefits of the OPEB plan, where we're actually moving from the current way that we're paying into the OPEB on the 24-year amortization period versus the 15-year amortization period, which is being recommended to your Board today. Shorter time period, obviously, replaces a fiscally and operationally challenging upfront OPEB cost with a consistent and equitable funding approach by using a single annual payroll rate. Builds into the budget annual funding commensurate with the defined plan. It's not expected that there would be a lot of variability in the amount that's budgeted for the OPEB, and moving forward, we would have that as a fixed amount, consistent with what the actuarial report would require us to fund. It implements a uniform annual rate charge for the OPEB liability as a normal and ordinary benefit that's reimbursable by both federal and state sources, where there are certain criteria that are required of costs that are actually reimbursed by the federal and state governments, and this would fit that criteria. Implants annual review of the OPEB progress as part of the departmental, as part of the budget preparation process. Right now, the OPEB actuary is prepared every two years. We're recommending that we actually prepare that every year so that we can get and stay in front of the buying down the liability. Ultimately, if the actuary holds true and we continue to fund based on a 15-year plan as being recommended to your Board, having it funded in 15 years would ultimately eliminate $16 million, up to $16 million, out of the operating budget to be harlayed into potentially other long-term liabilities like the retirement liabilities. Having said that, let's look at the retirement liabilities and see where they're at. Looking at both the miscellaneous and the safety plans, the amortized rate, and this is just the rate associated with the amortized component, where we're actually buying down that unfunded liability, for the miscellaneous and safety plans are 12.2% and 14.6% respectively. The amortized cost for the current year is about $17.7 million and $5.5 million for the miscellaneous and the safety plan. And then moving forward, you can see that those percentages and those costs are anticipated to increase in fiscal year 1516. When you compare them to what the rates were actually back in fiscal year 2008-9, you can see that the amortized rate was 4.9% and 10.3% for the miscellaneous plan and the safety plan. So these rates, the amortized portion of the rates, have been significantly increasing over the last six years, and that's primarily due to all of the things that have transpired in the Calpers retirement plans, where we've had low investment returns for a couple of years, negative for two years during the recession, and in 2012, it was actually 0%. And then all of the modifications that have gone into the actual Calpers system, where we've lowered the discount rate to 7.5, we've built in recent experience modification factors where they changed the estimate on how long people were living and when they were retiring, and how much those retirements actually costed. And then building in the investment losses and in the smoothing methodology changes that I mentioned earlier. All of these things have added to the fact that Calpers rates from an amortized portion of the UAAAL amount have been increasing, and quite significantly. This is actually an excerpt from a staff report to the Calpers Board just about a month ago, a month and a half ago, where they're looking at the annual review of the funding levels and risks, where staff is presenting to the Board what they're seeing is coming up in the future. And I just want to point out that what this says basically is that there's a considerable amount of contribution rate volatility and a risk of further changes in funded status, meaning Calpers may come back with an actual lowering of the discount rate again. And when you consider what the discount rate is for the servit, the California Employees' Retirement Benefit Trust, that actually is where the OPEB is being held, it's 7.33% the discount rate. Calpers is using a 7.5% discount rate today, so they're actually assuming that they're going to be making more than the servit. The servit is much more conservative, much more constant, and has produced better results as a result of that. I think the Calpers staff is seeing that as well, and we're likely to see a discount rate change somewhere in the near future, down to probably 7.25% from 7.5.
Chairman Euler?
Yes.
Andy, have we taken a look, just at least conceptually, at what that discount rate change would mean to these numbers?
I have this number. I want to say it's between 50 and 60 million dollars in additional UAAAL.
Going from 7.5 to 7.7 and a quarter?
7.25, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And contribution rates are expected to remain high for an extended period of time unless there is a period of exceptional returns in the market. What exceptional returns is defined as, I mean, I really can't speculate at this point in time, but contribution rates will remain high. And it's important to remember also that over the next five years, Calpers will be building in all of the changes that have happened over the last couple of years as they ramp up those rates. So it's expected that the county will be paying about $18 million more, about $9 million more in each plan over the next five years, at the end of those five years aggregate. We did look however, at alternatives to funding the Calpers, similar to the way we looked at the OPEB. Looking at the unfunded liability cost for 1415, and then in 1516, we went over that. We looked at a 20-year plan and a 25-year plan for Calpers for both plans, and the 20-year plan would represent an additional $8.5 million in operating costs that would need to be added to the budget every year. And then looking at a 25-year plan from the existing 30-year plan would add about $4.2 million in additional costs as well. Staff is recommending at this point that we continue the existing Calpers funding approach, where we're just funding the normal cost in addition to the amortized cost that is presented as part of the Calpers actuary on an annual basis. What this does, it allows for the phasing in of known rate changes. We know there are going to be rate changes that will impact the county and the amount that it pays over the next five years, and then ultimately what that, what those rate changes impacts are on our budget as we move forward. Understanding the potential implications of additional changes impacting the employer rates, that would be the lowering of the discount rate. And then receipt of future actuary reports is actually going to occur six months earlier from Calpers, which is kind of a benefit, because instead of receiving the report in October, we will begin receiving the reports in April, just a couple of months from now, to be able to consider the implications of what goes into the actuary reports for our budget process that we're preparing for the coming year. So pursuant to the presentation on the status of OPEB and Calpers unfunded liabilities, at this point in time, it's recommended that your Board adopt the resolution approving the revision to the OPEB policy that essentially takes us to a funding the OPEB over a 15-year period, in addition to requiring that the OPEB actuary be done on an annual basis and that that be considered as part of the budget process every year for your Board. And then also adopt a resolution appropriating the $3.2 million that has been set aside as part of the final budget for funding of unfunded liabilities directly to the California Employees' Benefit Retirement Trust for the OPEB. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions by Board members? See any questions? Members of the public have any questions or comments on this? Okay. Couple thoughts, first of all. Glad our new Public Information Officer is here, because I think this is one of the biggest untold stories in local government today. The direction that this Board set a number of years ago to begin paying down these liabilities, the position that it's put us in today, to where we're actually talking about solutions affirmatively and not simply reacting and being whipsawed by the market and these rather dramatic variations in contribution rates that we've seen. You know Supervisor Wagen rightly refers to the path that the Board set us along back in 1996 in Health and Human Services, and a model that has led to be, come to be known as the Placer Model in Delivery Services and HHS, and quite frankly, this should be the Placer Model as well when it deals with unfunded liabilities that folks should know about. The- I would hope that as we move forward with filling positions and we begin to get information out about the success of this approach, you know, for years when things were good, there was almost bidding wars between local governments over employees and compensation packages and what can you offer and all that good stuff, which is healthy to an extent. But the reasonable assuredness that an employee actually has who starts a career with a local jurisdiction that they're going to receive those promised benefits ought to be a good point of consideration, and Placer County can point to this kind of a trajectory as we are recruiting employees to say, others might promise you this, but what is their ability to actually deliver over that 20-year timeframe when you do retire? Whereas here you have some certainty of knowing that based on the policies that you're actually going to get the benefit, and that was a key component, a key ingredient. I know it was considered by every member of this Board in 2008-2009 when we had to impose terms on our bargaining units. A key ingredient considered by every member of this Board at that time was, I want to know that I can look you in the eye and be reasonably certain I can deliver on what we're promising you, and based on the way that we're going, we were going back then, we couldn't, and today we can. And so I feel very good about that, and I look forward to seeing how we're able to get the word out to our friends at CSAC who are here, and Supervisor Holmes can tell that story down there, but also letting the broader populace know that through tough times, we've managed the situation when others have reacted to it. So those are my thoughts. Any other? Supervisor Duran?
Just a quick comment. Just want to appreciate the work that you've done on this, and I agree with what Chairman Euler has said with regards to that delicate balance between making sure that our unfunded requirements are funded to the fullest extent, but at the same time, we're able to allow our departments to put on staff when they need it. I know that our- I know that our auditing staff, we've, we've been looking, that's a critical piece of what we do here is the checks and balances to make sure that all our commitments with regards to our federal and state grants are being taken care of appropriately. I know that the sheriff is looking to put on other types of correctional officers and additional staff and that we, we continue to walk that very fine line to getting that done. Thank you.
And Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, Andy, I wanted to say thank you to you, and I know that you don't work in a vacuum, so I want to say thank you to everybody else who helped you put this, this plan together. I really want to echo Chairman Euler's comments. I think past boards and this current board have been very, very thoughtful about making decisions that we can look people in the eye and say, what we promised you, you're going to get. Now, the world is a crazy scary place, and so, you know, we do what we can to, to make sure that we can follow through on those promises. But I think that not just you and the folks who worked on this plan, but department heads, county staff have all really come to a realization in the last six to eight years particularly, that times have changed. And so we see that at the county with, with tiered retirement benefits as we bring new hires on. And, and those tiered benefits are, are something that, again, will allow us as a board to look people in the eye and say, we can't give you what we gave someone who came on 25 years ago, but this is what we can give you, and it gives you the ability to rely on what will happen in your future. And I just think that's, that's really a blessing in, in this time and in this day and age, and it's, it's something that is really a benefit of public service. And just really, it's an opportunity for me to say, I encourage people who want to do good things and want to know that they have a retirement in their future, come into public service. This is a, this is a great, a great group, not just here at the county, but all the other public servants that we have who are really dedicated to making things better. And that includes their own lives and their own retirement. So thank you to everybody.
Supervisor Wiegand?
I'd just emphasize every word that was just said and finish by saying, I feel a lot better with you being here, both as relates to the vineyards issue earlier today as well as this one as we close. Thanks.
Agreed. All right. We are being asked to take three different action items. Well, we received the reports, we've already done that. We have a resolution revising the other post-employment benefit county financial policy to include a planned time period by which to achieve full funding, and then also adopt a resolution with a one-time appropriation of $3.2 million within the 14, 15 operating budget in order to make that payment to CalPERS or the California Employee Retirement Benefit Trust, I'm sorry.
Elizabeth Perro.
Okay. We'll grab Montgomery's motion and Andran's second. How's that? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you very much. Our last action item today is consideration of our current committee and commission assignments. And I think it's perhaps more prudent just to say, does anybody have anything that they want changed, they want off of, they want on to, and just kind of limit the discussion around those. Supervisor Holmes, anything that you?
I'm serving on the Air Pollution Control District Board, and I've been kind of overloaded with a lot of other boards, so I just wondered if any of my colleagues would like to take that position. That's current out on the?
Want to, want to trade for Golden Sierra? Is that what you're saying? I wish I could right now, but I'm...
Okay, well, you, you're the alternate, so I guess I can call on you periodically. Is that correct?
Yes, you may. And you are my alternate on Golden Sierra, so I, I quite can call on you periodically.
I've done that. The other one I have is ER4 Agency on Aging. Alice Gonzalez, Rockland resident, has been on there since conception. She was actually the Director of Department of Aging under the Duke Major administration, and she has resigned as of last December, and I want, I want to appoint Eldon Luce to that position as the primary director, and then I'll be the alternate for ER4 on aging.
Okay. Any other? Supervisor Montgomery, you have?
Yeah, it's my understanding that Placer County's rotation is back onto this year, Nevada Conservancy this year, and Jim Branham let me know that he was expecting my appointment to that position. So I, I don't see it on our list, but apparently that needs to be added to my list of committees and commissions.
We can bring that back.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, yeah, this is, this is for discussion. This will come back to our board on our consent at our next meeting for adoption of all those committee and commission appointments. Anybody else anything, or are we good with status quo at this point?
We're all good.
Okay. All right. So you have your direction in regard to those? Okay.
Let me just note one thing. The West Placer Waste Management Authority has asked for an alternate. The other city jurisdictions have alternates that are appointed board members. I don't know that there's anything in their bylaws that would preclude a staff alternate if the two members that we have could not attend.
I'm, I'm not, given that our staff is staff to the Waste Management, I don't like the idea of that being...
I'm just throwing it out there. I know you all have full plates.
Yeah. So is currently the members are Supervisors Duran and Wiegand? Okay. Anybody have a particular desire? I will put my name forward as an alternate if nobody else is interested.
Good.
Okay. All right, and you can go ahead and list who's the alternate. And when that happens, I'll tell Holmes he has to go to Golden Sierra.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. No other action there. Prior to having County Council read off what we're going to do in closed session, Supervisor Wiegand has asked that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of our former ag commissioner. Supervisor Wiegand, if you would, please go ahead and have that.
Thanks, Kirk. On December 21st, John Wilson passed, neighbor of mine and lifelong rural Lincoln resident and longtime pioneering family in the, in the area. But he served as our ag commissioner, you know, I should have gotten these dates and I don't recall, but most of the 80s and 90s, or at least the first part of the 90s, and then retired from that position, so he'll be greatly missed, and we lost another icon of Placer County.
Okay. Jerry, if you would please, our closed session items?
The board will now adjourn to closed session to take up two items of existing litigation, and the board will then adjourn as the board of supervisors and convene as the Placer County In-Home Supportive Services Public Authority to have a conference with their labor negotiators.
Okay, thank you. And after closed session, we will come back here to form wager. And after closed session, we will come back here to form wager. Ann is ready?
The board has returned from closed session where they heard reports on two items of existing litigation, and then adjourned as the board and convened as the Placer County In Home Supportive Services Public Authority and heard a report from their labor negotiations team. No action was taken.
Thank you. And with that, we will adjourn the January 6 meeting of Placer County Board of Supervisors in memory of our former agricultural commissioner, John Wilson. Thank you very much.